Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the June 13, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. We have a number of items coming out of committees today and seven other discussion items on the agenda. I would ask commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments. We start every meeting with the opportunity for the public to comment on an item not contained on the agenda. Are there any members of the public here who wish to comment on an item that is not contained on the agenda today? Seeing none, we will move on. There are no items on consent this morning, so we will move to the election of officers. Before we do that, I want to welcome our new commissioner, Commissioner Peeler. Welcome.
Thank you.
We have two positions that we will vote for. First is the chair position and then the vice chair position. I have fully enjoyed serving as chair. Thank you very much for the opportunity since 2021, but I think it's an appropriate time to pass the mantle, pass the baton, if you will. So I would like to make a motion to nominate Vice Chair Miller to be the chair for this next term. Do I have a second? That was seconded by Commissioner Mann. And if there are no other nominations for the chair position, by show of hands, those in favor and any opposed, that motion passes unanimously. And next, moving on to the vice chair position. The vice chair serves as the chair of the Committee of the Whole and serves as the chair in the Planning Commission chair's absence. Would anyone like to make a nomination for the vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Rains as vice chair of the Planning Commission.
And do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Otwell. Are there any other nominations or any other discussion? Then by show of hands, those in favor and any opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I'm very excited for the next term. Moving on to committee report, I'm going to switch the order slightly so we can discuss all of the COW items together. That's Committee of the Whole. So the first item we will discuss is item two, which is text change TC 223 TOD revisions. This is a narrowly defined change to the existing overlay to remove the prohibition on single-family homes and duplexes and to provide a maximum size of commercial uses within apartment buildings. Text Change Committee Chair Rains, do you have a report?
Yeah, keep it brief. We had a text change meeting last Wednesday, June 7. It was a robust discussion with some community members, and we had some additional questions for staff regarding HODs and then CODs related to their relationship geographically to proposed TODs. So we have asked, we would like to ask the Planning Commission to send the council a request for a 60-day extension, which would put the next meeting August 16.
Excellent. With that, do we have a motion for a 60-day time extension on TC 223?
I move to recommend extend.
By show of hands, those in favor and any opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Moving on to items one and three, which are related on the committee report. That includes CP 722, the New Bern Station Area Planning Study and Comprehensive Plan Amendments and Rezoning Z 2922, New Bern Station Area Planning TOD. Vice Chair Miller, do you have a report?
Thank you, yes. The Committee of the Whole intends to hold, thank you, yes. The Committee of the Whole intends to hold a special meeting to discuss both of these items on Thursday, June 29 at 4:00 in this, in these council chambers. The reason for holding the special meeting is due to the large number of parties who wish to attend. These council chambers were the only venue that could accommodate that number of people, and June 29 was the first time that both the council chambers were available and we could achieve a quorum. So we will be meeting in this room. Typically, those meetings are scheduled from 4:00 to 6:00. There may be a desire to continue that meeting longer, perhaps all the way to 6:30 or 7:00. And I wanted to just take a, I know we've done some polls, we've sent around some polls about the availability for this, but I just wanted to get a sense if people think that they could stay at least until 6:30 on Thursday, June 29. Anyone that, is anyone not able to stay until 6:30? Okay, great. Then we will hold that meeting on June 29. In addition, the Committee of the Whole has recommended that the Planning Commission request a 120-day extension on these two items from council. This would allow us to hold our, one meeting for this item, for these items on June 29 at our special meeting, and then another meeting in August before we have to vote this out to the city council. And with, are there any other questions or discussion items on these two New Bern Station Area Planning items and rezoning cases? Then with that, I would like to make a motion to request from council a 120-day extension on both CP 722 and rezoning case Z 2922.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Rains. Vice Chair Miller has offered a motion to recommend 120-day extension for CP 722 and Z 2922. Commissioner Rains has offered a second. Is there any additional discussion or debate on the merits of the motion? Seeing none, by show of hands, those in favor and any opposed, that motion passes unanimously. And then the last item, I will move to you again for Z 623, Vice Chair Miller.
Thank you. At our last regular Committee of the Whole meeting, we discussed rezoning case Z 623. At that meeting, we identified, we voted that, excuse, sorry, I need to pull this back up. We voted that case out to the full Planning Commission without a recommendation due to the fact that the Committee of the Whole wanted to see some additional conditions related to the facade in the event that this building is used as a self-storage unit. The applicant has provided that additional condition, and we wanted to bring that back to the Planning Commission to see if there are any additional questions or comments from the Planning Commission on that item. I think I'd like to turn it over to staff to review that additional condition and the updates on that case.
Hello, everybody. Sean Stewart, Planning and Development. So this again is the rezoning case Z 623, 1557, Glenwood Avenue. The request is to rezone 2.6 acres of land from office mixed-use five stories Parkway frontage to commercial mixed-use five stories conditional use. The Planning Commission's deadline for action is July 4, 2023. Conditions have been added as staff has received new conditions since the meeting of the Committee of the Whole since May 23. Principal uses included in commercial mixed-use have been prohibited. There, there's per condition two, personal service along with beauty, hair and salon, copy centers, and more have been subject to specific use standards. There what, there is a limit on residential units, limited to 118 dwelling units on this property, just as well as commercial use. This is combined eating establishment and retail sales, 40,000 square feet, and office space is limited to 135,000 square feet. No parking on this site, but shall be permitted between the building and Glenwood Avenue. And the applicant has brought forth some financial requirements to apply to new buildings built on this property. The newest and latest, the newest and latest condition is related to the facade, facade conditions that the Commission would like to have seen. These are related to self-storage facilities located in this, Mr. McMahon. There are new outstanding issues. The zoning in this area is a mix of office mixed-use R4 with some commercial mixed-use in this area. The closest immediate zoning is office mixed-use. The site, the site is on the southern face of Glenwood Avenue. The site is what used to be, or it still is, a AT&amp;T building, office building. Caveat here, there's, if I could show it here, no.
Sean, I'm going to stop you there. I think they were just looking for an update on what's changed since committee.
Oh, I do apologize for making you sit through this.
You're good. No, you didn't get too far.
If I could go previously. Okay, yeah. So this, this newest condition is, again, it is mainly concerned centered around the facade standards, so there are rules for lighting in this, for lighting to face on the, on the building, there will be specific lighting standards. One, automatic lighting and signage to be faced on, if I could pull it up here, if I could pull it up here, to be away from the apartments, which are currently here and not represented on this map, but there will be signage relegated to this specific area, and all lighting on the building will be relegated to automatic lighting, shutting off no more than 20 minutes after inactive use or inactivity motion lighting.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. That was a very helpful update. Moving on, do we have any questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Thank you. I move to approve case Z 623 and to adopt the approved consistency statement contained in today's agenda materials.
Excellent. And do we have a second? Commissioner Dotell? Vice Chair Miller has offered a motion to recommend approval of Z 623. Commissioner Dotell has offered a second. Is there any additional discussion or debate on the merits of the motion? Seeing none, by show of hands, those in favor and any opposed? Okay. Let it be noted, there is one in opposition. Would you like to state the rationale for opposition?
Sure. As I stated at the Committee of the Whole meeting, I just don't agree with changing the zoning to allow self-storage. I don't think this is the best location for a self-storage unit along Glenwood Avenue with frequent transit. I believe there's a transit stop nearby, and I just don't think this is the appropriate location, so.
Thank you. Duly noted. With that, we've finished the committee reports, and I will move us on to old business. There are three items on the old business agenda today. These items have been previously discussed, and we have heard public comments, so we will begin with a short staff update focusing on revisions to the request. The first item on old business, item one, is rezoning Z 7222 on South Blunt Street. This is a request to rezone a 0.13-acre parking lot from downtown mixed-use three stories urban general frontage with general historic overlay district to downtown mixed-use 12 stories urban general frontage conditional use. We last heard this item at our March 28 meeting, where it was deferred to allow the completion of RHDC's review, the notes of which have been included in the backup material. I will also note, I believe Commissioner Mann would like to recuse himself from this item.
Yes, Madam Chair and Planning Commission. I request to be recused from this case as our company has business interest and affiliation with the ownership on this case, so I would just like to be recused.
Excellent. Without objection, Commissioner Mann is recused from Z 7222. So we will start with a staff update from Robert Tate.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Chair. Robert Tate with Planning and Development. So this is rezoning case Z 7222 at 423 South Blunt Street. Like you've heard, you heard this case last, at March 28, sorry. So your deadline for action is going to be June, I'm sorry, July 26 is incorrect. So last you heard this case, it went to RHDC. They did not make a recommendation, but they did provide a response in the form of a memo. So I'll be going over the revised conditions in that memo. So the first condition did not change prohibiting some uses otherwise allowed in the downtown excuse district. A new condition that you do see now addresses the building facade along the first level on Blunt Street, and it's requiring the building to have materials, one of the following materials, so masonry, brick, glass, and metal, and at least 25% of that facade should be brick. The second addresses the architectural base of the building, and with it being compatible with the Prince Hall Masonic Building next door, the building should be up to the cornice line and shall be distinguishable above the cornice line through a change in material, finistration, ornamentation, rhythm, or other sculpting in order to enhance the pedestrian environment pursuant to the UDO. And the last revision or revised condition addresses the development of the property in coordination with protecting the Prince Hall Masonic Building. The applicant provided conditions that would have vibration-sensitive equipment installed at the subject property. And the last thing I want to briefly go over is the RHDC memo that you should have. So after three filled motions, the Commission was unable to pass a motion in support of or opposition. So the discussions had during that meeting resulted in a stalemate. Some of the reasons were because of the removal of the overlay district. There was disagreement amongst commissioners about the likelihood of this request obtaining a COA. There was also some agreement that you would like to see redevelopment on a vacant lot
So without objection, I'd like to hear again from the applicant. The applicant and those in support will have a total of eight minutes, and then we will take public comment and those in opposition afterwards.
Latisha Shapiro. I am an attorney at Morningstar Law Group. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Blunt Property Partners LLC, and I'm joined here today with Sohail Alar, along with Mac Paul of Morningstar Law Group, to assist in the presentation and to answer any questions you may have. The request is not only a request to develop what is currently a parking lot, but it is a unique opportunity to facilitate a partnership between the owner developer and the adjacent Prince Hall Masonic Temple in creative collaborative efforts focused on the restoration and preservation of the Masonic Temple Building. This is a small 0.13 acre site located just north of the corner of South Blunt Street and Cabarrus Street, adjacent to the Prince Hall Masonic Temple. This request will provide greater zoning flexibility for an underutilized site. Here are some additional photos to give you a sense of the site looking east, and a photo of nearby construction. This is a photo of the Masonic Temple Building and the site looking northwest, and a photo of the site looking northeast and the Masonic Temple Building frontage at the corner. And there's a photo of the Masonic Temple Building looking north from Cabarrus Street, and a view of the site looking east that shows the Masonic Temple frontage along South Blunt Street. And there are a couple of photos of the Cell Tower property located just east, northeast of the site. As you heard, and I'll run through this quickly, the current zoning is downtown mixed-use up to three stories with an urban general frontage located in the Prince Hall Historic Overlay District, and the request is for downtown mixed-use up to 12 stories with an urban general frontage conditional use. As provided in the staff report, the request is consistent with the future land use map. The request is consistent with the future land use central business district designation, which is intended to enhance downtown Raleigh as a vibrant mixed-use urban center. The category recognizes the area's role as the heart of the city, supporting a mix of high-intensity office, retail, housing, government, institutional, visitor-serving, cultural, and entertainment uses. Heights in the downtown could reach as high as 40 stories in the core, but would taper down to meet the adjacent neighborhoods. In addition, the request is consistent with the urban form map, as it is located within the downtown center, and includes an urban general frontage. The property is located near the proposed Wake County BRT Southern Corridor that will connect downtown Raleigh with the North-South Station in Garner. The property is also located at the northwestern edge of the Prince Hall Historic District, and as Robert mentioned, the request includes removal from the district. The applicant has offered conditions committing to the use of quality materials and compatibility with the Mason Temple Building up to the cornice line, as well as protection from vibrations during construction. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up to discuss his, some of his projects here in Raleigh. What you're seeing here is a picture of the saint, and he'll also be discussing his preliminary renderings and his relationship with the Masons.
My name is Soal Alawar. I'm a 40-year resident of Raleigh. I live at 14201 Winfield Circle. This application is essentially trying to put in a hotel on the site. It's a small site, so we are working with very limited kind of area, and we have been working hand-in-hand with the Masonic Temple to essentially integrate the two properties. We are trying to renovate, help them renovate the building, and have an integration of the two properties based on that. So this case is, I didn't know I was walking into a sort of a historic district when I purchased the property, but I'm well aware of what is going on in the neighborhood. And so we are trying to put in some conditions that will help mitigate the feel that we are doing something higher than usual for the neighborhood. We feel strongly that 12 stories, you know, we didn't apply for 20 stories, we applied for 12 stories, and it feels that the scale of the neighborhood for 12 stories would work. And so here are some renderings that, preliminary renderings of what I thought could work. Obviously, this will be more articulated, but this is just a quick sketch of what we were thinking, maybe creating a courtyard between the two buildings as well, and opening up to have the entrance from the Masonic Temple into the building. So these two buildings will become almost one, and we'll get funding to renovate the historic building, which is actually on the registry at this time. Anything other than that, that's really all. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public or the applicant team who wish to speak in support? One more? Excellent.
Good morning. I'd just like to say, my name is Richard Campbell. I'm the Secretary for the Trustee Board of the Masonic Temple Building, and like Soal has stated, you know, we have been meeting for several months now to come up with some type of plan that would help us in the renovation of our building and also to support what it is that he's trying to do. So I just come here today to say that the Prince Hall Temple Building is in support of his project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. If there are no other members of the public who wish to speak in support of this item, we will move to those who wish to speak in opposition. Those in opposition have a total of eight minutes to speak.
Good morning. Jenny Harper. Live at 312 East Cabarrus Street, just a couple of blocks down from the Prince Hall Masonic Building. Thank you for allowing some additional public comment. I just wanted to reiterate, like I said back in the March meeting, whenever that was, that the project is really not about approving a 12-story hotel, that there's no design, or some vague designs to share. There's no guarantee that it's actually going to end up like that, but it does sound lovely. There is nothing preventing the developer from working with, supporting the historic rehabilitation of the Prince Hall Masonic Building without being removed from the Prince Hall Historic Overlay District. This is also not about returning infill on a previously vacant lot. I think we all can agree that that's a wonderful, much-needed effort to return density to areas where at one time there was a lot of density. Here's actually just a couple of examples, though, of infill that have happened within the confines of the Historic Overlay District. This is directly behind the building in question. This is a very contemporary multifamily building. We have, you know, contemporary design, a nod to history. There's a little bit of everything that has not been prevented, you know, from being within the confines of the Historic Overlay District. This application really is about the continued systematic dismantling of the first Historic Overlay District that was dedicated to the recognition, protection, and celebration of the city's Black history, culture, and heritage, a district that was finally established a full 40 years after Oakwood and 30 years after Boylan Heights, despite what the same attorney keeps telling you again and again, maintaining that there was not support for the district's creation, which is true if it's viewed through the lens of Shaw's leadership team and speculative developers and people who neither live in the district nor own property. There was nearly 68% of actual residents and property owners who were in favor of the district being created. This application is really about circumventing the zoning process, to find a go-around when, as the State Historic Preservation Office shared in their memo, which I know is in your support materials, there has been no justifiable reason provided to do so, to remove the overlay from this, from this lot. This is an attempt to go around your peer commission and not even attempt the certificate of appropriateness process. I'm sure it's really tantalizing to just say, oh, this property is on the edge of the district, it's on a corner, the hotel sounds great. I know that they've been talking with the Masons and have said that they're going to help them, but before you know it, the district's been nibbled a little bit away and a little bit away until there's actually nothing left. The city will once again show that the contributions of people who literally built this city, which are reflected and expressed in this tangible built environment, will only matter until the point that a developer has set their eyes upon it. The applicant shared RHDC's last business meeting that they didn't realize that the parcel was in an HOD when they bought it. As some commissioners responded externally speaking, that is no one else's fault. The Prince Hall Masonic Building is a beloved structure, and anyone can see that it needs some help. While all the plans sound great, again, there's no guarantee that any of that will happen if this rezoning case goes through. In contrast, I have been disturbingly recently notified that Mr. Paul has been actively soliciting and cajoling property owners about being removed from the district and/or their support of Prince Hall being de-designated after just 11 years, particularly along the South Blunt Street edge. He is apparently the only land use attorney who's been willing to dismantle this historic Black neighborhood as born of the fact that he has represented every single one of these removal applications. A still unbuilt hotel project from 2015, the daycare rezoning that sailed through your body last year despite the thoughtful and well-reasoned objections from Ms. Bennett, Shaw's rezoning that sailed through your body earlier this year despite Ms. Bennett's thoughtful, well-reasoned objections. Approving this rezoning will further cement this track record of crushing lowly residents and property owners in favor of developers and will hasten this neighborhood's death as he goes from one property to the next. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Thank you, sir.
My name is Eugene Myrick, Southeast Raleigh resident, and I'm a member of an organization called Save Our Shaw. We are in opposition of the rezoning of Shaw University. I heard about this, really just heard about this project a couple, maybe not even a week ago, with the rezoning, and I went to a Raleigh Historic Commission meeting, and I got to meet all of these gentlemen here. And like the applicant said, he was unaware that he was purchasing property in a historic district. I got to speak with the Brothers of the Lodge. I'm not a Mason. Some of my fraternity brothers go to the Lodge. I got to speak to some of the members of the Lodge, and they were saying they're interested in upgrading their facility. It's an older building, and they're looking forward to being able to redo wiring and redo plumbing, roofing. I don't even, I didn't, I'm not sure if they are aware of the resources that's available to them to be able to update the historic building. One of the, some part of the conversation that I had with the gentleman that owned a lot is, for me, just walking by, just going by, it just seems like a lot. But one of the members of the Raleigh Historic Commission started to explain all of the historically Black-owned businesses that used to be there. But this is part of the problem that we're having right now in the city, is that things are being demolished and they're totally being erased, and you don't know what's there. So for me, I don't know, how do you move forward with a situation like that, when there's absolutely nothing there? Which is why we are in opposition of the rezoning of Shaw University, because we don't, there's just too many plaques. Me coming from my, my home in Southeast Raleigh, I'm passing the John Shavers plaque. I'm passing all of these other plaques. So I don't know how to tell them to move forward. I'm not interested in trying to tell the Masons what they should do with their building. I just want them to know that it's a historic building that has resources that will help them restore that particular building. I don't know how to tell the gentleman, I mean, he purchased a piece of property, he had no idea what the, what the history of it was. So do you try to prevent him from, I don't, I don't, I don't know where we go from there. But there are now currently, there's an apartment building across the street, there's some kind of apartment building on the backside, so do you encourage him to, well, go, only go up as high as the other buildings? But this is part of the problem that we're having in the Prince Hall District with things being removed from that district. We don't know if people are properly educated. The applicant didn't even understand why he was being grouped in with Shaw University. They didn't understand that those two buildings that, that, that folks are trying to demolish, the Fraser House and the Peggy's House, are in the Prince Hall Overlay District. So they couldn't quite understand why we're being grouped in. He said, I don't want to do anything with Shaw buildings. I don't want anything to happen to those buildings. But there's an education that's not taking place here that needs to begin to take place here. And anybody that's selling property in that area that needs to let these owners know that you're buying property in a historically Black neighborhood. So I'm not, again, I realize that you said in opposition, I'm just here to give my commentary because they, I, I believe this applicant means, well, I know the Masons, meanwhile, they're trying to, they're trying to remodel their building to bring it up to speed, but we don't even know if they know that all of the, the funding that's out there for them. So I just wanted to add my two cents, and I would like to continue dialogue myself with, with, with the applicant, as well as the Brothers of the Masonic Lodge, because once again, they don't quite understand why they're being grouped in with Shaw University. And I just wanted to add that to the, to the, to the dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myrick. If there are no other members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to move on to questions and comments from commissioners. I will start with a question to Historic Preservation Staff. My question is related to the conversation that occurred at RHDC. If you would be able to characterize around the statement that there was disagreement about whether this property could receive a COA? I found that surprising when I look at other projects that have been approved in that district, received a COA, and then projects in other districts. The landmark property, the Creamery, which received a COA for significant height, but was able, was able to go through that process successfully?
That is right. Hello, everyone. I'm Collette Kinnane. I'm one of the preservation planners and one of the staff to the RHDC. So you're correct. There was significant conversation about the COA process and this particular application. COA process is quasi-judicial. It is, each project is reviewed against the special character of the district and our design guidelines for historic districts and landmarks. Because it is a quasi-judicial process, we certainly don't want to see too much conversation about an application or possible application before it comes to the COA Committee. That said, the conversation, a 12-story building is fairly incongruous in terms of the special character of the Prince Hall District. There are possibilities. The design guidelines for new construction do speak to increasing height toward the middle of the block, so it is possible that a taller building with a, you know, shorter street front that increases in height towards the mid-block could be approved. It is difficult to say whether that could be a 12-story building without seeing a design substantial compelling evidence to support that. The Creamery Project, which is a Raleigh Historic Landmark, did recently receive approval for a 20-story building with a two-story building in front. The difference, I think, in that project compared to this possible project is the size of the parcel. The Creamery building is a very large, almost full-block parcel, and the, the mass of the taller building is set back. I think it was 75 feet from the back of the historic building, so there was a distinct separation there. But it's difficult to compare a, a project that has been reviewed and approved to a possible project where we have not seen designs. I don't think that, I think that was a non-answer, but it's difficult to estimate how a project like this would fare through the COA process without it actually going through the process.
Thank you. That, that's helpful, Ms. Kinnane. I have another question, too. I know it had previously been the practice of Historic Preservation Staff, when property changed hands in a district, there was information that was sent out about the particular district the property was in?
That did happen in the past. I believe it was tied to the change in address related to the water bill, but in the past, maybe five years, that practice has stopped for reasons I am unclear. There was a technical reason for the end of that practice, but I'm not entirely sure what it was.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions and comment, or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Chair Fox. I will try not to be too redundant, because when this came before us the last time, I had a lot to say, but some things bear stating again. I will say, now that we have heard more from the applicant, I am not opposed to what he's trying to do. I'm not opposed to development on a vacant lot. I'm opposed to the way we're dismantling this historic district. I am also sensitive to property owners who say the overlay district itself is limiting them. I'm not interested in, in being inequitable in that way either, however it's there. And it bothers me that it seems like, it feels like we only want to preserve black history in Raleigh until Raleigh is booming. And then, once we start booming, it's like, oh, well, let's remove this from the overlay district so we can develop it like we want to. Is black history only important when the area is economically unviable? I mean, I don't know why we can't preserve the history and move forward at the same time. I mean, I share Mr. Myrick's, you know, his, what he was saying about, how do you do that? It's a fine balancing act, and I appreciate that, I understand that. But I also see our state Historic Agency saying, this is being done to avoid regulation rather than create a better boundary. And I don't want to be a part of a process that helps someone avoid regulation. I think the historic overlay district is there for a reason. I think we need to respect that process or dismantle the district. It just bothers me that we keep seeing these parcels coming to systematically remove properties from the overlay district. And if a larger conversation needs to be had by council or RHDC about dismantling the district altogether or changing the boundaries, then I think that's fine. And if rezonings came to us after that, I would respect that. But until that's done, I'm not going to be part of dismantling this historic overlay district just because now Raleigh is suddenly booming and BRT is coming, and now black history isn't worth preserving. So I'm, once again, probably going to be the dissenting voice, and that's fine. But I just want to be clear that I'm not opposed to what the applicant is trying to do. I, I think it could be really cool. I'm opposed to circumventing the process to do it.
I couldn't agree with you more. I'm, I'm not opposed to the development of a vacant parcel. I like that use being proposed in that area that seems appropriate. I do think with a very context-sensitive design, you, you could manage yourself through the COA process. And so removing the overlay does, does more things that are bad than are good. So are there any additional questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Peeler?
I'll just say briefly, because I'm, I'm kind of new to, new to this board, new to this case, but definitely, definitely echo Commissioner Bennett's comments. I think the way that a lot of these overlays are being kind of chipped away at kind of lacks a great process, particularly in this case. I think if the project was going to have some kind of permanently affordable subsidized units, that might make it a little different in my eyes, but being with the project is, I just think that, yeah, it doesn't, doesn't sit great with me the way it's being removed. So, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any additional questions or comments from commissioners for either the applicant or staff?
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge that at the city council meeting last week, they, when we asked for an extension of time on this case, some of the councilors suggested that there was, be a work session on the Prince Hall District in August for the city council itself. I think in the context of reviewing this case specifically. So I look forward to that. I don't think that we can ask, I mean, we could ask for another extension of time, but I think the goal of the city council was to review this case in that context with the broader question. So I'm glad that they are taking that up. And it provides me some more reassurance that, that broader context is going to be evaluated in connection with this project. As my other commissioners have mentioned, I am in support of this type of development right next to, and, and working together with the Masonic Temple. I think this is, the project itself is a strong one. I also wanted to add the integrity of the developer in this case has a history of providing context-sensitive development and projects in areas with overlay districts. And so I think that this could be a compelling project for this area. So I, I expect we'll have a split vote on that, which I think is fully appropriate, and look forward to the council fully addressing this Prince Hall. And perhaps we could add a recommendation to support their having a, the council having a work session to discuss the Prince Hall District in a more broad context.
Thank you. If there are no other comments or questions from commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I will move to approve case, rezoning case Z-7222 and adopt the approved consistency statement contained in today's agenda materials with an amendment to add a recommendation that the city council have a work session on the Prince Hall District in general.
And do we have a second for that motion? Second from Commissioner Rains. So Vice Chair Miller has offered a motion to recommend approval of Z-7222. Commissioner Rains has offered a second. By show of hands, those in favor, and keep your hands up, because I'm acknowledging we are likely going to have a split vote. By show of hands, those in favor? I was, I was doing it as a, as a gesture, but we've got two in support. And then those opposed? Six opposed? That motion fails. Would we like to follow up with an alternate motion?
I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated June 13th, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend denial of the zoning amendment.
Okay. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Peeler. Commissioner Bennett has offered a motion to recommend denial of Z-7222. Commissioner Peeler has offered a second. By show of hands, those in favor? And there's a comment that wants to be made, but let me finish voting first. Okay. And those opposed? Okay. That motion passes six-two. Commissioner Lantman?
Just wanted to ask if there was any consideration to some of the follow-up discussion regarding looking at the Prince Hall District a little bit more deeply as in conjunction with that motion.
I believe that process is actually underway. The RHDC has an ad hoc committee that met in May, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So just to make sure we have this for the minutes, Ms. Shenitha, that was a motion to deny, which was approved six-two. Moving on to the next item on old business, that is Z-9022 on Rock Quarry Road and Diamond This is a request to rezone approximately 1.88 acres from residential four to residential 10 conditional use. We last discussed this item at our February 28th meeting, where we deferred the item to allow the applicant to address proximity to a community well on an adjacent parcel. I understand we may not be able to act on the conditions at this time, but I would still like to start with a staff update.
Not only does the applicant want to defer here, but when you last discussed this item, you specifically deferred it to your next meeting.
Oh.
And so...
It showed up on our agenda just as a surprise?
Yeah.
Well, that's fun.
I apologize for that. So would ask you defer, to defer this to the next meeting, please.
Excellent. Then we will defer this item to the next meeting. No need for a presentation at this time. Moving on to the last item on old business. This is rezoning Z-1023, Carolina Pines Avenue and Cherry Circle. This is a request to rezone approximately 15.6 acres from residential 10 conditional use to residential mixed-use five stories conditional use. This case was last discussed at our May 23rd meeting and deferred to allow for additional conditions. We'll start with a staff update by Sarah Shaughnessy.
Hi, good morning. Sarah Shaughnessy, Planning and Development. So, yep, this is an item to rezone about 15.6 acres. This is south of downtown on Carolina Pines Avenue and Cherry Circle. Your new deadline for action, or sorry, your deadline for action is July 8th. So since you last discussed this case on May 23rd, the applicant has submitted some additional conditions in response to your comments. The main changes here are prohibition on telecommunications towers as a principal use, and also a prohibition on parking between Carolina Pines Avenue and the development. So one of the issues or inconsistencies we raised was the inconsistency with the lack of frontage proposed and the urban frontage recommended by the urban form map. This prohibition of parking between Carolina Pines Avenue and the buildings improves consistency with that. I think additional pedestrian access from Carolina Pines would make that fully consistent. Consistent with the comprehensive plan overall, although, as I noted in my previous presentation, it is inconsistent with a future land use map. A number of consistent policies here, and then the two remaining inconsistent policies. So because it is inconsistent with the future land use map, if approved, it would require an amendment. And there's the proposed amendment, if approved. No outstanding issues. Again, your deadline for action is July 8th.
Thank you, Ms. Shaughnessy. I'm going to move on to questions and comments from commissioners. Commissioner Otwell?
Yeah, I'm going to harp on my frontage, which is my favorite thing to talk about, evidently. I really appreciate having the build-to and the buildings brought up to the street. I am concerned that without adequate pedestrian addressment, I might have just made that word up, without an adequate addressing of the street from the buildings for pedestrians, that it could become an isolated and kind of desolate space that might not be comfortable or safe. The applicant around, I would love to hear if they'd be willing to add conditions to directly connect primary buildings to the sidewalk, to the street. What I'm trying to avoid is just having a, a large, inaccessible wall of a building along a large section of the street.
Danny McGlamry, Drive McGlamry Engineering, we're the civil engineer on the project. Understand the concern. We do believe there will be pedestrian connections. However, there are a lot of grading challenges. We talked about a desolate area. Carolina Pines, there's probably 1,000 feet of street front along Carolina Pines of this property, and there's only maybe 30 or 40% of that that's developable. So that's where we've stayed off the building, build-to requirements for building witness, because it's just physically, you can't build anything, because the stream buffer, the Steel Street Extension takes up probably 60% of the street frontage along Carolina Pines. So what we do have is a drive that's going to have a 10-foot, basically 10-foot pedestrian path that's going to connect to the new 10-foot pedestrian path on Carolina Pines Avenue, because the 10-foot path is on our side of the street that's part of the CIP project. And that pedestrian path will connect all the way through our site, all the way through the property to the south that's going through the same rezoning process, you know, connecting over to the park, essentially. So with the grading challenge, part of what we're doing is trying to get, you know, basement parking without the restrictions that come with R-10. And so we just don't want to commit to, you know, the, with the flexibility and the grading to have that pedestrian connection wrap all the way by the stream and come up, and that's part of the reason that we're putting in a condition to provide that 10-foot path. I think all the buildings are going to be right on Carolina Pines, because they have to be for grading. That's why we have no problem with the condition for the 50-foot parking setback off Carolina Pines and make sure, you know, there's not parking right along the street, but...
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Are there, I, I don't have the UDO open in front of me. Maybe the commission or staff can help me out with what are the rules as far as facades along this kind of frontage? Is there any kind of rules about breaking up of the material or visual interest that we see in some of the other urban areas?
Yeah, generally speaking, there is a 30-foot by 30-foot blank wall requirement that the UDO imposes. So, yeah, there can't be any more than a 30-foot by 30-foot area. This will be, these are going to be residential apartments, so expected to have it kind of typically broken up, how you'd kind of see residential units. Don't expect large blank wall areas along Carolina Pines. And just finally, yeah, to reiterate on urban frontage, there is, I'm not sure if we have, I just want to show you real quick. Sorry, is this me, Sarah?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Oh, apologies.
That's okay.
Just show you a quick visual of the Carolina Pines Improvement Project, the CIP that Dan mentioned, that is going to result in some substantial, you know, roadway improvements along Carolina Pines. Again, driving, driving factor of this rezoning is the fact that the entirety of that governmental taking is now occurring on the south side of Carolina Pines. You know, you have single-family along the north side, so they didn't want to take their front yards. So all of that kind of transit easement area, as well as Dan mentioned, a full 10-foot wide multi-use path along Carolina Pines, which will connect our, we are going to construct a greenway connection from that 10-foot multi-use path all the way through the site, and of course, will connect ultimately down to Peach Road Cultural Center. So again, unique environmental kind of constraints on the property that make traditional frontage difficult, but we believe by pushing those buildings up against Carolina Pines, these kind of good new improvements that are occurring, as well as the greenway condition, on the whole, we believe greatly contribute to the urban form on the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any follow-up questions? Mr. Otwell?
I'll just say, I'm still kind of uncomfortable that we could have long stretches along Carolina Pines that you just can't get back and forth to the property, and I don't think that's optimal, but I'm not prepared to vote against this request based on that. I think that the conditions are adequate.
Thank you. I tend to agree with you, just based on the grade concerns, just looking at it planometrically, you would, you would think you'd want additional connections, but having driven out there, I think it would be a challenge to provide that. If there are no other questions or comments from commissioners, I'd like to entertain Commissioner Rains?
Thanks, Chair Fox. For zoning case Z-1023, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated June 13th, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment. This recommendation also includes an amendment to the future land use map to the extent described in the adopted consistency statement.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Otwell. Commissioner Rains has offered a motion to recommend approval of Z-1023. Commissioner Otwell has offered a second. Is there any additional discussion or debate on the merits of the motion? Seeing none, by show of hands, those in favor? And any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to new business, there are four items on the new business agenda today. In general, new business items have not been previously discussed, so we will hear a full staff presentation, applicant presentation, and hear from any members of the public. Our first item on new business, item one, is rezoning Z-423 on Creedmore Road. This is a request to rezone approximately 1.12 acres from residential four to office mixed-use three stories. This is a general use case with no conditions. We'll start with a staff presentation by Alicia Thomas.
Good morning, Alicia Thomas, Planning and Development. The case before you is Z-423. This is to rezone 5306 and 5310 Creedmore Road. The request is to rezone 1.12 acres from residential four to office mixed-use three. Your deadline for action... Your deadline for action is August 12. Zoning in the area of the site is predominantly residential to the east, whereas there is mixed use along Creedmore Road to the north and the south. And then, the site is located, again, along Creedmore Road and south of Millbrook Road with a mix of future land uses, including institutional, low-scale moderate, low-scale residential, moderate-scale residential, and commercial. And then, here is a closer view of the site here. The site currently consists of two lots, again, 5306 and 5310 Creedmore. Each of the lots have single-family dwellings on the site. And again, this is a general use case, so there are no conditions being provided. This table here shows the change in the zoning between existing and proposed. The acreage will remain the same at 1.12 acres. However, the number of units will increase from 10 units to 56 units, and office and retail uses will be allowed under the proposed zoning. The office square footage would be a little under 40,000, a little over 40,000 square feet, and retail square footage of 4,000. The site has a higher walk score than average, higher transit, transportation, and job proximity than the city average. However, it does have a lower bike score. There is, although it has a lower bike score, it has a 60-minute service time, and Route 636 is nearby. The proposed request would add a variety of housing types to the area, and it would add housing supply. It would not include any subsidized units. The request would allow for smaller units and smaller lot sizes than the city average. Demographic and land use information, there is a lower change in median gross rent than the city average, and there is a lower percentage of people of color, lower-income population, and linguistically-isolated populations in this area. The request of office mixed-use 3 is consistent with the office and residential mixed-use designation, and the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the future land use map, and there is no urban form guidance. Here are a list of policies that the request was found to be consistent with, including future land use map and zoning consistency, compact development, density transitions, single-family lots on major streets, and housing variety. No inconsistent policies were identified with this case. There are no outstanding issues, and your deadline for action is August 12. I'm going to make a note here that the applicant has recently shared with staff that they'd like to add a third parcel to the request. And that being said, staff would like to recommend deferral. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Next, we will hear from the applicant team. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes to speak. If they're not available. And while we're pulling that up, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? One? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Derek Baker. I'm president of a consulting group here in town. We have about 40 employees. We relocated our company to Raleigh about two, three years ago. So, we're really looking for space, for owner-occupied space. This was not intended to be an investment development because we had looked to buy some office space, couldn't find what we needed, decided to purchase this, decided to purchase a piece of land and kind of built a suit. And so, we originally built, if you see the three properties, we originally purchased of the three properties, the center one, which is 5306 Creedmore Road. That particular property was largely abandoned and neglected, but in the process of this, of the, in the process of the process, so to speak, the other two properties have become available, and so we've kind of decided to knit them together into a development. And so, it, I think we covered, Alicia covered a lot of the information about it. Just giving you a sense of what was there before, it was kind of an eyesore. The house was vacant and in serious disrepair, weeds and brush. This was kind of the condition of the property. So, it, you know, it was junk vehicles, appliances. It was, it was an eyesore. It was, it was not good. 5310 is currently occupied. The house was originally built in 1948. I think it has had one or two owners. They've made some updates in 1977. We have a tenant in there now, and so it is, it is, it is being rented. And then, 5300, which is the corner property, which we are currently, just recently formed an agreement to add that parcel to the mix, is a vacant lot. It's wooded. There's currently no current or previous structures on it. It was bought by the neighboring house about 60 years ago, and so they're interested in selling it now because the resident of that home is moving to a seniors' care facility, and so they'll be selling both of their properties, including this corner. Lines up, one of the things we liked about the property was that it did require rezoning, but it did appear to line up very clearly with future land use falls in with all of the, you know, as we've gone through the process, as you can see, it's consistent with everything along that way, really is going to preserve, I think, the integrity of that Creedmore Avenue corridor. This is, this is our intent. This is just a sketch at this point. We're going to build, we're planning to build three kind of two-story buildings with largely medical and professional, for largely medical and professional offices. The first one, we will occupy, and then we'll, we'll, we'll rent them as we go. We're planning to build them out in phases, so if we finalize the purchase of the corner property on the corner of Sherborne, we'll probably build that one first because there are houses, the other two houses, we'll renovate the house that I showed the pictures of, which was neglected, we'll renovate that one, and also rent that one, and we'll kind of build these out kind of phase by phase rather than doing it as one development. But again, it's very much a conceptual sketch of what we're thinking. The little structure between the two buildings to the north is a little gazebo, so we're thinking about a little, just a little courtyard there between the two properties. Lots to do in the planning side, but that's just a, just a general rough concept of what we have in mind for the property.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak in support? Seeing none, we'll move on to those in opposition. Those in opposition have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
My name is Gary Schoonover. My residence is 2616 Sherborne Place. I back up to these properties. I've lived there for over 30 years. We've gone through the Harris Teeter being built on the corner of Creedmore and Millbrook, all the things that goes on with that. We went through all the construction for the North Carolina License and Bureau next door to these three pieces of property and all that. We've sustained damages from the construction equipment, the trees being dropped, that kind of thing, but our biggest thing is the noise. The construction we'd had to put up with, he's talking about doing in three phases, you're looking at probably a year for each unit, so you're looking at three years' worth of noise, construction, beeping, beeping, machines backing up and beeping all hours of the morning and day. The traffic, the traffic's going to be the real problem. There's a road from the North Carolina License Bureau, concrete, curbed, set up to come all the way south behind all three pieces of this property that will connect to Sherborne Place. That's going to create a pass-through, a cut-through, to go all the way through that and go away, go all the way to the front door of the Harris Teeter where people are walking and dodge that intersection. That intersection is an F-grade, from my understanding, that the intersection of Creedmore and Millbrook, they're creating a dangerous situation. I've approached the owner about doing something about it. He offered to put up a gate. I said, "The gate's going to do nothing. Who's going to open and close the gate, when and what? It's going to get forgotten by." That needs to be blocked to create a barrier to eliminate a safety issue of cars speeding through there, the noise, the safety part of it going through the front of the Harris Teeter is, would be a big, big issue on my part. Not to mention, the dumpsters, there's going to be a couple, two or three dumpsters out there being dumped at all hours of the day or night. Who knows what that'd be? I just, I don't see this as being the best for my neighborhood. There's an apartment complex being built no less than 1,000 feet away with over 500 units. They tell me that's going to be 800 cars in the morning, 800 in the afternoon, looking for an additional pass-through, cut-through. The reason I know that is just from being at the different meetings, but where I live, there's, I live on the Dead End Road that backs up to this. I see them daily come through, go down the Dead End Road, turn around, come back, trying to find a cut-through around that dangerous intersection of Creedmore Road and Millbrook. I'd ask that you oppose this, take this off the books, and deny this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If there are no other members of the public who wish to speak on this item, I'd like to move to questions and comments from commissioners. And we will note that we know we need to defer this item to our June 27 meeting. If there are no questions at this, Commissioner Miller, do you have a question?
Yes, I just had one question for the applicant. You said there is, it's vacant at 5306, but there is a tenant at 5310. Is that right?
5306 is vacant. 5310 is currently leased. It has a, has a tenant in it. The first property we would build would be on 5300, so we would renovate and rent out the house on 5306 in the interim time. So, we, we don't anticipate these to be like boom, 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 one after another, so Mr. Schoonover doesn't have to worry about three years of consistent, but we'll have some time in between, so we expect to have tenants in the other two buildings for probably the first one at least two or three years, the next one probably three to five. Thank you.
Excellent.
I just asked that question just because it probably seems like, even though that is single-family, or, yeah, single-family, that's probably, the rent, I would assume there is probably less than market rate. So, I think it's worth noting that, you know, that would be the removal of housing from, from what I see in this plan, and the removal of, you know, someone who's living in naturally occurring affordable housing, so just pointing that out.
Noted, thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, Vice Commissioner Miller?
I have some additional questions. I know we're deferring this case, so is that appropriate to discuss the merits here? Okay. I know the neighbor said that they were concerned about construction, particular noise, and at all hours. Is there, maybe it's a question for staff, can an applicant include a condition with respect to construction hours?
Conditions can be added to the request if necessary or the applicant would like to add, yes.
Specifically with respect to construction hours?
Yes, conditions could be added. That's something that we, I could have a conversation with the applicant about, yes.
Thank you. And with that, and the dumpster location and noise related to those issues, has the applicant considered adding a condition with respect to both construction hours and dumpster location?
Actually, along with that, I'd like to tag on to that one. I know there are some code requirements related to both of those items, noise emanation and also dumpster usage, if you could answer with those as well.
Yes, the code does have requirements related to solid waste services and as it relates to whether it's going to be city that's picking up or a private company, but there are regulations in terms of screening requirements, as well as how often the trash will be collected. And then, as it relates to the hours of construction, I know that there is, but I will look up more information about the hours of the construction and then share that information with the applicant as well related to that in terms of forming a condition.
Excellent, thank you. We have any additional questions or comments on this one? Commissioner Bennett?
One question related to traffic. I know this case doesn't warrant a traffic impact analysis. I'm wondering if the apartment project that the member of the public mentioned has required an analysis. I'm just wondering if there's any type of study being done of the intersection at Millbrook and Creedmore.
I believe, this is Jason Myers in Transportation. I believe that the project he was referencing is Z-94, which is a planned development district. And maybe Bynum can tell us when that will be heard by you. Is that later today or next time? I'm saying it's coming up soon. So, yeah, and there was a TIA for that because all planned development districts have a TIA. It studied both the intersection of Millbrook and Creedmore and many of the site accesses, and then the next intersection to the south.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so Z-94 is a planned development request. They have recently resubmitted, and we expect that they will need to resubmit again. So, it will probably be this fall before you would see that in front of you sometime, maybe, maybe as early as August.
Okay, thanks. I didn't realize it hadn't come to us yet. So, then it is possible that this intersection would be studied, and perhaps there could be improvements.
They've already completed a TIA that's in review by staff right now.
Okay.
And actually, the TIA review is complete, and I need to review Z-94, which is why I was thinking about it coming soon. It's coming onto my to-do list soon. We could potentially bring that TIA review and provide that TIA to just understand some of the site context here. I don't think that, given the size of these parcels, that it's necessarily proportional to consider very much the impact of this, given the large challenges of everything that's out there and the larger site, which has more significant impacts. But if, you know, it's been done, it's been reviewed, it's public record, we could bring it to Planning Commission if that would be helpful.
I think that would be helpful, especially since that's one of the points of opposition, so it would allow the public to see what recommendations might be being made for that
Thank you for that.
Can I add on to that? I agree, and actually, just anecdotally, I drive through this intersection daily for work and use that Harris Teeter sometimes, and it is a real mess of an intersection. And if there was a cut-through there, I might try to take it because it is really hard to get through there, and I definitely understand the gentleman's concern with that because, yeah, it's, it's, it's just hairy driving through there.
Thank you. There are no other questions or comments from commissioners? It looks like we are deferring this item to our June 27 meeting to allow the applicant to add an additional parcel and also look at items related to construction hours, dumpster usage, and providing us with the TIA for the other case mentioned.
I just want to, for the applicant's benefit, note that any changes they want to make to be considered on the 27th need to be received by Friday, and if that seems unlikely to them, maybe they could offer that, and we could defer to a different, to the meeting after the break.
Can we hear from the applicant?
I think the later deferral would be good.
Okay, excellent. To a date certain?
Sure, why don't you come back to that first meeting after the break in August? I think that's the 8th.
August 8th. So, without objection, this item is deferred to our August 8 meeting. Moving on to item two under new business, this is rezoning Z-823 on Ratchford Drive. This is a request to rezone approximately 3.49 acres from industrial mixed-use three stories with special highway overlay District 2 to commercial mixed-use 20-stores conditional use. We'll start with a staff presentation by Hannah Recau.
Good morning. Hannah Recau, Planning and Development. So, this is a request to rezone on one property on Ratchford Drive, 2499, from IX-3 with a SHAD-2 overlay to CX- shod-two overlay to CX-20 conditional use with no overlay. So, this site is in an area predominantly with mixed-use zoning, mostly IX to the south, and RX and OX to the north. If this sounds familiar, you had a case last year that was also on Ratchford Drive, parcel just to the north, Z-1022. So, this is located off of Capitol Boulevard, just before the interchange with I-440. Generally, there's a mix of office and industrial, industrial uses surrounding the property into the south and across Capitol Boulevard, with more residential and office uses as you go north. A close-up of the site, I can see that Crabtree Creek Trail is located on the western part of the site, going south. There is currently a car dealership located on this property. Some views from Ratchford Drive, you can see some of the change in elevation, and on the bottom image, you can see a portion of the Crabtree Creek Greenway. So, a handful of zoning conditions are proposed here, that prohibiting some uses normally allowed in CX, requiring at least one outdoor amenity area that would be contiguous either to Ratchford Drive, or to the city greenway easement, and some requirements for what that looks like. And then, Condition 3 does restrict entitlement quite a bit. It does that through a vehicle trip budget, so it would restrict to no more trips than is, would be produced under the current line, excuse me, current entitlement, except if the Z-1022 property, 2501 Ratchford Drive voluntarily offers some of the trips in their zoning conditions that were approved there. So, and then, Condition 4 has several parts that would apply elements of zoning frontage. The request doesn't include one as a whole, but there are some conditions here that require build-to range along Ratchford Drive, some limitation on surface parking, street-facing pedestrian entrances, and pedestrian connections between the building and the sidewalk. And finally, a condition offering a bike, city bike-share station if one is not offered on the other property to the north. So, impact of this is allowing development to build up to 20 stories in height. The, as I mentioned, in that Condition 3, the entitlement would stay roughly the same, the asterisk there being if that other property to the north allocates some of the trips that were approved in that rezoning request, those could, that entitlement could be established over the two properties, essentially. So, some context here, this area has an average walk and transit score for the city, but a higher bike score than average, likely because of that greenway trail adjacent to the site. And then, proximity to Capitol Boulevard provides a higher-than-average proximity to jobs. There is bus service on Capitol Boulevard, Route 1, which does have 15-minute service, so frequent bus, within walking access to frequent bus service. The request could possibly add to housing supply, again, if that provision in Condition 3 is taken up, but there are no guaranteed subsidized units in this request, and a variety of housing types and small lots would be, continue to be permitted. So, this site is located in a census tract that sort of extends north from where the site is, that the residents are significantly more likely to be racial minorities, low-income, or have less than a high school education, and the median gross rent has increased quite a bit faster than the city average, 41% versus around 25%. Future land use map guidance for this site is public parks and open space along where the greenway easement is, and then high-scale residential. CX-20 CU is inconsistent with that designation, permits buildings taller than is envisioned by that category, and a range of uses, freestanding retail, mainly the commercial uses that are not envisioned by that category. So, it is inconsistent with that guidance. Urban form guidance includes city growth center and frequent transit area that the site is a part of. As I mentioned, there's no zoning frontage that's included in the request, but there are a number of conditions that speak to many of the aspects of that guidance, relationship between the buildings and the street, and pedestrian friendliness. So, it is consistent with that urban form guidance. And it is consistent overall with a comprehensive plan, a number of policies touching on helping building healthy communities, reducing vehicle miles traveled through mixed-use corridor development, and the mix of uses that support mixed-use areas. Inconsistent policies, future land use map, and again, guidance in LU-10.3 for higher-scale residential areas that there only be ancillary retail uses, and then some aspects of the design, urban design guidelines are not met through the proposed conditions. So, with that, your deadline for action is in August, and you have two regularly scheduled meetings in that time. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Recau. Next, we will hear from the applicant team. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jennifer Ashton. I'm a land use attorney with Longleaf Law Partners, and I'm here today on behalf of the owner applicant. And we are talking about 2499 Ratchford Drive. You all may remember, about a year ago, we came in front of you on 2501 Ratchford Drive. So, as I'm talking today, you'll see a lot of what we're speaking to, and the conditions that we're proposing are very close in nature to what was offered on 2501 Ratchford. So, back about a year ago, we weren't quite sure what was happening with 2499. Now, we know what's happening with 2499. The owner is intending to build 2499 and 2501 together, so it made it a little bit easier to come in front of you and actually talk about how these properties will be built out. The rezoning today is only on 2499, but again, you'll hear me talking a lot about 2501 as we go through. So, just a quick overview of 2499. It's about 3.49 acres in size. As Hannah mentioned, it's currently an auto dealership. There's an existing sales trailer on-site, but the rest of it is basically impervious parking spaces. We do have frontage along Ratchford, and we are currently zoned as IX-3 with a shod-two, which was identical to what 2501 used to be zoned as. Our future land use designation is that higher-scale residential and public parks and open space. We are within a city growth center, and our proposed zoning, which is what 2501 was as well, is to go to CX-20 with conditions. One very unique feature about this rezoning case that I do want to highlight for you all is we are not proposing any new density on this site over and above our current entitlement of IX-3, unless the owner of 2501 gives us some of their trips that were assigned to it during its rezoning case. The reason for this, it's twofold. We think that the project this developer and this owner want to build, we can use the density given by 2501 and spread it out over two lots instead of one lot, and we can get the numbers and the units that we need, and the retail and office space that we need. But two, we understand that Atlantic Avenue is a, sorry, yeah, that whole area, the roadway systems there, they are a little bit constrained, so we just want to make sure that we're not overburdening the roadways. So, again, we're taking a look and trying to spread our density across two parcels instead of one, but we'll get more into that zoning condition in a minute and explain it a little bit better. So, just to keep in mind, as we're talking about this site, the density for 2499 is actually capped at the density for 2501. So, real quick, just to existing conditions on-site, you'll see our parcel, it looks like a big triangle. The 2501 Ratchford Drive is a little bit to our north, and we have frontage along Ratchford Drive, we have the Raleigh Iron Works site a little bit down here to our, that would be our southeast, I think, and we also have the Crabtree Creek Greenway Trail, which we're going to be talking a lot about in a minute. Our current zoning, and as Hannah mentioned, we have an IX-3, and we do have a shod-two overlay. When we came in on 2501, we requested CX-20, which is what we're requesting now, and also that removal of the shod-two. We don't actually have direct frontage on I-440, so the, our belief is the necessity for the shod-two overlay isn't really there, as you would have if you were immediately adjacent to 440. Our future land use map, we are higher-scale residential, and we also have public parks and open space to our rear along the creek. As you can tell from this map, you know, the higher-scale residential, we're kind of like a little bit of an outlier now. We are surrounded by a lot of industrial, public parks and open space, and we do have community mixed use. There is a higher-scale residential, multifamily development to our north, but again, our little, immediately adjacent area, we are a little bit of an outlier now with that higher-scale residential. Just like with 2501, we do believe this site is appropriate for the higher height of 20 stories. We don't have any immediate residents near us that would cause impacts, and also, we are almost a gateway into the city as you're driving down Capitol and coming off of 440 as well, you'll be seeing this site. So, we think if there's an appropriate place for height, this is probably that. As I mentioned, we are in a city growth center, there is a planned BRT station, and we do have regular bus service along Capitol Boulevard. So, greenway trails. During the 2501 discussion, there was a good amount of interest in what was happening to the greenway trail. This is a heavily-used trail. Just to kind of give you some context here, there's two different lines of color on this map. One is brown, one is green. The brown is the old greenway trail section. It used to be a wood decking structure along the rear of our site that has been removed, and the reason for its removal is Crabtree Creek was having some flooding issues, and so that that deck just continually got washed out. So, the city has relocated the greenway trail to the front of our property along Ratchford Drive, and that is now the green line that you see on the map. And the trail goes all the way under Capitol Boulevard and continues to our south on this map. So, I will get into in a minute some conditions that we're proposing to add improvements to this greenway trail area, and also talk to you about, you know, why those things maybe weren't able to be offered during 2501, but we're able to offer them now. So, our rezoning conditions, as I mentioned, we have no new density being proposed for this site. There are two ways that this site can develop out. One, it either develops out at its current entitlement of IX-3, or two, 2501 gives it some of its reserved trips. 2501 is capped at 423 AM and peak hour trips. So, if 2501 gives some of its trips to 2499, 2499 can take advantage of that and go higher than IX-3, but under no circumstances can the density exceed for both 2499 and 2501. It can't exceed what 2501 got. So, again, there's two potential ways to develop. Either way, though, we're not adding new density to this site. And we're thinking too, as you're spreading the density out over two sites, we're actually decreasing it. Oops, sorry, missed one there. Use prohibitions, these are exactly the same as what was in 2501, and we also are proposing an outdoor amenity area that has to be a minimum size of 1,000 square feet, and it shall be amenitized. This is also identical to what was in 2501. Again, we're trying to create more of this urban feel with kind of these urban plazas, where the outdoor amenity areas are congregated together in a larger area, instead of kind of these throwaway wasted spaces. We are proposing a hybrid frontage. We are in that city growth center, and either an urban or hybrid frontage is recommended. So, we are trying to mimic here some of the elements of a PL frontage. This is identical to what was proposed and approved in 2501. So, we are being consistent with those frontages across both sites. Some things to note, we are providing for a build-to, and we also are providing for limited parking between the building and the street. We did want to make some accommodation for building, or parking between building and the street, we didn't want to eliminate that, just because it's becoming more common in these mixed-use urban developments to have ride-share spaces up front to allow drop-off and pickup. So, we wanted to make sure that that was accounted for here, and to allow for that possibility. And then, we're also having some inclusion of direct pedestrian connections between buildings and sidewalks, and also primary-facing entrances along Ratchford Drive. Again, trying to mimic that hybrid frontage. We did not apply a frontage over the entire site, just because it is such an odd-shaped site. As you notice, it's a triangle, and it really gets narrow on some of its ends. So, greenway trail improvements, or improvements that will assist with the greenway trail. We are proposing another bike-share station here. 2501 had a condition where it would either locate a bike-share station on its site or on the adjacent greenway trail. This condition for 2499 says that if there isn't a bike-share on 2501, meaning it's gone on the greenway trail, then there will be a bike station on 2499. So, the city does have the potential of getting two here as both these properties develop out. And then, I'm running out of time, but I do want to get to this last condition for y'all, because this is very important, and it addresses Commissioner Ottwell's concern with 2501. But I'll ask if I can continue.
I'll notice that the time just expired, but without objection, I'd like to give the applicant an additional minute to be able to finish her thoughts.
Thank you. So, we were able to study what we could do bike lane-wise in front of 2499, and we believe, after that study, that we are able to accommodate a bidirectional bike lane that will be physically separated from the travel lanes, and it will be separated by a raised median or curb, and it will all go on our side of the road. Just so you all know, there is an NCDOT property on the other side of the road, and there is no intention to add the bike lanes to that side according to staff. So, they did ask us if we could accommodate a bidirectional bike lane on our side, and after studying it, we do believe we can. So, we are proposing to add this condition today. This is what the concept is, and this is what the languages we're proposing, and that if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but we're hoping that adding this bidirectional bike lane will help with Commissioner Ottwell's concerns from the 2501 case. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to questions or comments from commissioners. Commissioner Ray?
Start. Two questions for the applicant. He mentioned that he have conditions that mimic the PL frontage. Would there be any objection just to applying the PL frontage to this property, or what are?
Yes, because the PL frontage does have a limitation on how much parking can go between the building and the street, and we didn't want to be limited by that, just because, again, of the odd shape of our site, especially when you get to the very narrow portion as you're heading towards Capitol Boulevard. There's also a build-to require, or I'm sorry, not on PL, but it was mostly the parking between building and the street. We didn't want to limit ourselves in that way, and also, too, we're trying to mimic what was allowed on 2501.
Yeah, I understand the, mimicking of the adjacent site, that's good. On the greenway, you said that the, on this condition here, it says it's only along Ratchford Drive for the bidirectional bike lane, so there would be no bidirectional bike lane on the adjacent site, or would that be continuous all the way to the main connection to the greenway?
So, I can talk a little bit about what's the rezoning case, and then what's the intention at the site planning stage for both 2499 and 2501. Because we're only here on 2499, I can only talk about the conditions for that particular site, and we're offering, as part of that rezoning, a requirement for this site, that it provide bidirectional bike lanes across its frontage. Now, for 2501, when we get to the site planning phase, the intention is to continue that bidirectional bike lane across the 2501 frontage as well. I just can't add that condition here, just because that particular property is not in front of you.
I guess a follow-up question for staff. Is there a way that we could almost guarantee that the site plan would require that for the adjacent site, even though it's not part of this case during site plan review, or?
You can encumber another piece of property that's not a part of your, a part of the zoning case.
Maybe if staff could speak also to what the process would be if a site plan came in for this particular rezoning, and it had a bidirectional bike facility, what would be the requirement of an adjacent parcel upon development of that one?
People are looking.
People are looking at me, so I'm thinking that that was a transportation question. Can you repeat that? I'm not sure I understood it clearly.
Sure. So, with this particular rezoning case, it's requiring the bidirectional bike facility. At the time that this would, this parcel would come in for a site plan, they would need to meet that zoning condition and provide that. At the time at which the adjacent parcel might come in, which was the previous rezoning, what might be required of them because you would not have a bike facility that just dead-ended? Or would you?
That's a good question. I think that absent any condition on any of these things, what they're committing in this condition would be allowed, if that's what they wanted to submit, without the condition. The condition does not make it allowable. It kind of commits them to do the bidirectional, rather than a standard frontage improvement would be to have a one-way direction on one side, which effectively eliminates the northeastbound bike lane that's already there on the frontage, which was, I think, part of the concern that led to this condition. If they were to follow through this condition on this site's frontage, but not on the next site's frontage, I don't think I have a clear or a solid answer on how that would be resolved. I'm actually, if I may, ask the city attorney to... I understood that they could offer a condition to do things in the right-of-way outside of their frontage. Maybe that's mistaken. So, they, and I'll, I guess, clarify. I can't see David's face if he's giving me a nasty look or not.
So, you're saying as a part of the development of 2499, they would need...
I thought they could commit to make improvements in the right-of-way outside of their site if they wanted to through a zoning condition.
If it's in existing right-of-way.
And this is?
Yeah, as a part of the development of 2499, which is the subject of this case, they could add a condition to require an off-site improvement in the public right-of-way.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
If the location of the improvement is in an existing right-of-way, so that the adjacent property owner didn't have to dedicate additional right-of-way, then they could, we could accept a zoning condition that said with the development of 2499 in Ratchford, they would make certain improvements in the right-of-way in front of, what is it, 2501? Yeah. That's, I was thinking it was a commitment to make an improvement on 2501, not in the right-of-way in front of 2501.
Yeah, and I believe that all of that existing bidirectional is in the right-of-way. Maybe I'm mistaken, and the applicant would certainly could correct that. I'll get back to your direct question. I don't think that there's a lot of concern that the applicant is going to propose to eliminate that and follow the standard in one place, and that we're going to have to solve some weird, weird thing. I'm not honestly very worried about that. I do think that the existing condition combined with this, the existing conditions on the ground now, combined with this zoning condition, will lead to a good outcome that has a sidewalk being added and an improvement to the existing bidirectional bikeway in the existing right-of-way, and making that connection just a little bit better than it is today. But there might be room for a little bit more commitment and certainty in that.
Thank you. That was very helpful. I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Thank you. So, I was just conferring with my development team. I think that there is interest in possibly modifying what we're proposing to include the bidirectional in the right-of-way through the 2501 frontage. We may come, we're probably going to get bumped to your next meeting to bring that language back to you all, but we may throw in some kind of language about phasing condition as well, like when those requirements happen, just based on the development on the site. So, but there, we're not saying no. We're interested in taking a look at this and seeing if we can make it happen, but...
Excellent. So, we've heard if we defer you to our next meeting, you would need signed conditions by this Friday?
I think I only have to have unsigned in today, and then two days before your meeting, like the Friday before your next meeting is when I have to have them assigned.
Excellent. So, that gives you a sufficient amount of time?
Yes, and working with David York before, we can wordsmith things as long as we're not changing the substance. So, after that 10-day rule, I think, so.
Excellent. Thank you. That's very helpful. Are there any additional questions or comments for this particular applicant or staff? Commissioner Otwell, and then Commissioner Bennett?
I'll say thank you for these conditions, and they go a long way towards addressing the concerns I had. And honestly, I'd be happy to trust the intentions of the developer in this case as far as conditions on the adjacent property. So, thank you. I'm satisfied there. The one question I have is that the condition that requires an outdoor amenity either along Ratchford Drive or the Crabtree Creek Greenway Trail easement. The easement, if I'm not mistaken, is still on the western side of the property against the creek. Could this result in a situation where a public amenity might not be publicly accessible?
It all depends on what staff ends up doing to amenitize the Greenway easement in the rear of the property. So, yes, that could happen. You know, obviously, this development team has always worked hand-in-hand with staff to make sure that whatever we're putting on site makes sense. So, my guess is if there is absolutely no plan for anything to go in the rear of the property, most likely that that amenity area would be bumped towards Ratchford Drive. But, you know, I can't speak 100% on that just because we haven't site planned it, but as of right now, what staff has told us is there is no interest in recreating a trail to the rear of the property, or it's not in the current plans. Their focus is really along Ratchford Drive, and that's where they wanted to see these amenities, and that's why we brought forward that bidirectional bike lane condition for you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. I want to thank the applicant too for these thoughtful conditions. It's nice to, it's nice to see. My question is for staff. Yes. I noted in the staff report for ancillary retail uses, there was a note that retail entitlement beyond what is envisioned by the policies could be established in the requested district, and that this could be made more consistent by restricting height, non-residential uses, and limiting the size and location of retail sales use. Could you just explain that to me?
Sure. So, that policy applies that vision to several of the future land use map designations that aren't envisioning kind of standalone retail or larger retail. So, higher scale residential, which is the case here, aligns closest with RX, which has limitations on retail built-in to that district. CX doesn't. So, you can establish a shopping center or other standalone commercial uses that are not ancillary to another use on the site or are larger than envisioned in that policy.
I guess I'm trying to understand, is this a concern? Is the concern strong enough that it's something we want to ask the applicant to address in a condition? I guess that's up to us.
I think what staff has done is called out for you the technical, technically how the request is inconsistent with policy. I think the question in front of you is, do you feel like that is something that as a commission, you want to discuss with the applicant? So, think about the rezoning that happened adjacent.
Right.
Right? Already, you have made some recommendations, and council has made some moves away from the current future land use map designation.
Did the adjacent rezoning have a condition? It did not?
Not to my recollection.
Thank you. So, on 2501, when it went to council, there was a discussion about the retail, standalone retail uses. And the reason it focused on 2501 is because there is an existing very large industrial structure already on site. And there was concern because of the existing structure that that could be converted possibly into a Costco or something that's more of a standalone retail. So, with respect to that building that's currently existing, council did request that there be a condition added that, you know, if a certain percentage of the building remains, then only X square feet is allowed for the retail personal services uses. But even in that context, the condition allowed up to 60,000 square feet of the retail personal services uses. Again, though, that conversation happened because there's that existing large industrial structure on site. 2499 doesn't have a really an existing structure other than that little tiny sales trailer. So, our thought was the recommendation that if this rezoning does go through, that the land use designation be changed to community mixed use that makes sense for this site. The uses of retail and personal services are already kind of in the area, as the staff report notes. And also, community mixed use is right next door to us now after that rezoning went through.
Okay. I think that addresses...
I had similar questions. Thank you for asking them. If there are no other questions remaining, it looks like we are going to defer this item to our June 27th meeting. Okay? Without objection, that's deferred to our next meeting. Going to move on to the next item on new business. That is item three, rezoning Z 1423 on Kirkland Road. This is a request to rezone 1.16 acres from Residential 4 with a special highway overlay District 2 and special residential parking overlay district to commercial mixed use three stories conditional use with the overlays to remain. We will start with a staff presentation from Hannah Recau.
Good morning. As was mentioned, this is a request to rezone a property from R4 to CX 3 CU. The zoning of this property, which is at the corner of Kirkland Road and Lake Wheeler Road, is a mix of mixed use zoning and residential zoning. So, you can see there's some pockets of R4 that are existing along Kirkland Road and then farther south on Lake Wheeler Road. Big picture of where this is in the city, this is off of Lake Wheeler Road, south of the interchange with I-40. Kirkland Road has sort of a light industrial predominant character, although there are a few existing residential uses on the south part. And then farther south, this is a generally residential area with Carolina Pines Ave and other neighborhoods on both sides of Lake Wheeler Road. So, zooming in to the site, you can see that it is undeveloped and forested, and has a small frontage on Lake Wheeler Road, and most of its frontage on Kirkland Road. To point out a few uses here, directly south, on the south side of Kirkland Road is a self-storage use. And some views of the site, again, you can see that it's undeveloped and forested nature. There's one proposed zoning condition which prohibits a handful of uses normally permitted in CX. And you can see the change in entitlement. The maximum building height of three stories would remain, but additional housing types, so townhouse and apartment at higher densities could be established, as well as non-residential uses like office and retail. So, this area has an average walk transit and bike score, but higher proximity to jobs than average. There is bus service, the 7L route farther down Lake Wheeler Road, which has 60-minute service. The requested district would permit more housing units than are currently permitted on the site, but none of them would be required to be guaranteed affordable to any income level, and it would increase the housing types and shrink the minimum lot size for residential development on the site. So, this census tract has a high proportion of residents who are racial minorities, low income, and have less than a high school education, and rent has increased faster here than the city average, 42% to the 25% over the city. So, the future land use map designation along, for the site and along Kirkland Road, the north side, is business and commercial services. So, that envisions a mix of commercial and light industrial uses with no housing or very restricted housing. The CX 3 proposed district does not have any limitation on housing, and so, for that reason, it is inconsistent with the future land use map. The urban form map has an urban thoroughfare along Lake Wheeler Road and a mixed use center in this area. These were applied recently through the Dix Edge area study, and urban thoroughfare specifically would recommend urban or hybrid frontage. And there's a lack of a frontage applied to this request, so it is inconsistent with that guidance. But it is consistent overall with the comprehensive plan, a number of policies touching on compact development, location of development at freeway interchanges, a mix of uses, the scale and design of the new uses, and the increase in housing entitlement on the site. Inconsistent policies, aside from the future land use map, mainly is on frontage. There's a few policies that touch on that, the frontage and design guidelines that apply citywide, and then one policy reinforcing that urban frontages should be established in the Dix Edge area study. And so, that sums up the overview presentation. Your deadline fraction is also in August. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Recau. Next, we will hear from the applicant. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
Good morning, Chair Fox and Commissioners. My name is Amy Crowell. I'm an attorney at Smith &amp; Anderson. I have with me today Jason Meadows. We're here on behalf of the applicant, Concept 8. We would ask that you approve this request.
Can you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
Let me move it back a little closer. Really, I'm here today to explain the thought process behind this request. A couple of themes you'll hear is this is a uniquely sized-shaped property, and why we approached it the way that we did. You'll see that it's currently zoned R4. This is historically distinct from the adjoining industrial-y zone parcels. This parcel actually retained its residential zoning in this 2015 citywide remapping. It's been vacant and undeveloped for 20-plus years, and my client, Concept 8, is under contract to develop this property. The request here really is to rezone to commercial mixed use, and the reason for that is to facilitate residential development. You'll see here on the left is a concept plan showing potential layout of townhomes on the property. We'll note that this conceptual plan is still kind of being evaluated based on site conditions. There's very specific topography for this uniquely shaped parcel. Regardless, they are thinking about 12 townhomes, the preferences, garages, mixed with maybe a parking pad, depending on the ultimate layout. We would state that this townhome development is consistent with the multifamily and townhome developments. Directly across the street on Lake Wheeler, there is an apartment complex, and south of that self-storage unit, there are townhomes. When speaking with the neighbors at the second neighborhood meeting, we did have a couple people come out, and, you know, this is a unique area. It's right off the I-40 Lake Wheeler interchange, and they were generally supportive of keeping, minimizing the impact of developing heavy and keeping it residential. Do you want to just address the two kind of inconsistencies here, the issues with the future land map designation? You know, we would contend that this future land use map really incorrectly treats this property as part of the adjoining industrial park, that Lake Wheeler Industrial Park. As I noted previously, the history and current status as residential property calls for different treatment in this case. More than that, the CX zoning provides for a mixed use that's consistent with the area, and for our purposes, quite frankly, allows first-floor residential. With the business and commercial services designation, would also like to note it would recommend an IX zoning here, and that doesn't really work for the ultimate development of this property. It's 1.16 acres. It's awkwardly shaped, and if you look at the topography, it makes it difficult to think of like one flat padded area. So, the development of townhomes on this site actually works pretty well, thinking about the size and the topography of this. You know, the developer here also kind of looked at marketability of townhomes for this site, considering, you know, its location to Dix and Centennial Campus versus any potential concerns with noise or traffic impact of the end... concerns with noise or traffic impact of the adjoining industrial park. And overall, you know, townhomes is a really good use for this very uniquely situated Next, I just want to address the issues with the frontage guidance on Lake Wheeler. First, I would note this property was under contract before the Dix Area Edge Study was adopted. Again, it's located just south of I-40 in the Lake Wheeler interchange. There's actually a DOT right-of-way between the back of curb and property line that results in about a 50-foot setback from the curb. And that could be a really big issue if you were to apply an urban frontage and Lake Wheeler was developed, and then you're that close to, you know, a larger thoroughfare right near a highway interchange. So we really think that kind of moving away from that urban frontage in this case works really well. There's also no urban frontage on the adjoining parcels as they're already developed. In considering whether to add some frontage conditions to the application, we did look at that, but we'll just be upfront and say the conceptual layout is still being considered. So we didn't want to make an already difficult developed property even more difficult by putting those urban, any urban frontages or urban-like frontage requirements on this. Again, you look at the topography, you look at the setbacks from Lake Wheeler, it just really wouldn't achieve the intended effects due to the unique right-of-way issues in this area for this particular property. And overall, we would just note that it's still consistent with this overall comp plan. We're here to answer any questions that you have about these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to check in and just see if there are members of the public who are here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to questions or comments from Commissioners. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. I was expecting Commissioner Otwell to have something to say about the frontage.
I was reaching for the mic.
You beat him this time. You beat him.
I just, I just want to make a comment that isn't necessarily related to this, to my, to any concern about this rezoning, but I noticed it on the last rezoning, and I noticed it on this one, and I've noticed it on several. And I just want to make the comment so we're all aware. When we look at the demographic data, there is a, I won't say trend, but there is a consistency that when we see these areas that have high racial minorities and high-low-income populations, we see the rents are increasing faster than the city average. Lots of reasons, implications, lots of implications, but I just want us to think about that because it, it has a lot to do with why I and others comment a lot about preservation, about affordability. It has a lot to do with people's concerns about displacement and gentrification. Again, I'm making no specific comment about this rezoning, just the fact that we keep seeing that. I just want to make sure that people are paying attention. With respect to this rezoning, I was noting the concern in the staff report about residential in this area that's surrounded by industrial, but then it is zoned residential currently, so it's kind of hard for me to, you know, vote to deny this when it's already zoned residential. So I'll just point out that I did note the concern, but I also noted the current zoning, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Otwell, did you have a comment regarding frontage?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think the applicant's explanation of the lack of frontage on this site is adequate and that I'd be happy to support this rezoning as it is.
Commissioner Reins?
Thanks, Chair Fox. I'd just like to echo Commissioner Bennett's comments. Since it is currently entitled for residential, I'm not going to, I'm going to support this case, but I do feel it's a bit odd that it's on the path to kind of a large industrial and warehouse district. So I have concerns about health, safety for the residential use, but as Ms. Bennett stated, I will support this case.
Thank you. I have a quiz question for Mr. Myers. When I was looking at this one, I was trying to imagine where the entry drive might be for this development. Can you remind me of the restrictions, the distance from an intersection for new driveways?
It depends on the street type. And unfortunately, my battery's dead, so I couldn't look that up very quickly. I believe it's 150 feet on a street like Kirkland.
Okay, I mean, on Lake Wheeler?
But if I can look at somebody else's, Lake Wheeler, there would not be a driveway there.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
In fact, there may be control of access on the, from DOT already in that, in that location.
Okay.
But even if there weren't, I don't think that there's sufficient, sufficient width between here and here.
Okay.
So I would be expecting a driveway in Kirkland to be placed potentially as far as possible from Lake Wheeler, but definitely, I think 150 feet is the number that's in my mind.
Thank you. That answers my question. Question to the applicant regarding the frontage. I generally don't support the lack of a frontage in areas where it's recommended. Are there any components of the frontage requirements that could be mimicked in this consideration, such as limiting parking along Kirkland?
Jason Meadows, RDU Consulting, the in-house civil engineer for Concept Eight Holdings, the development company. You know, currently with, with our townhome proposal, which again, we're predominantly residential developer, we do townhomes and other mixed, you know, home types all across Raleigh, but we would not have, we would not be proposing any parking between Kirkland and the proposed units. They would either be garage-style units or parking within the site. Part of the frontage issue is just figuring out how we possibly mitigate noise and sound from some additional traffic, you know, and deal with the complexities of this specific geographic area. So buildings fronting on the street probably wouldn't be ideal from a marketability standpoint. So an urban-style frontage, which again, which Amy mentioned, that the Dick's study, which I believe is what's applying or desiring an urban frontage, was applied after we went under contract and chose to pursue rezoning for this case. So we're trying to catch up to that, but that's some of the reasons, you know, noise mitigation and probably pushing those units back away from Kirkland to promote some marketability.
Okay. That answers my question. I think I'm comfortable with it after that.
Thank you.
If there are no further, Mr. Myers?
I would like to correct myself. It's 200 feet for a right-of-way up to 80 feet. And if this frontage were not 200 feet in total, then it'd be to the extent possible, and we do not, you know, prevent access to a piece of property without purchasing it.
Gotcha. Thank you. That's helpful.
I have one small question. Just language of the DOT right-of-way, does that mean that on that right side of Lake Wheeler, there could not be a sidewalk built in a DOT right-of-way? Is that essentially what that means?
No, the sidewalk, if there's not control of access, so there's two aspects of this. One is that DOT apparently controls some of the right-of-way, even though Lake Wheeler Road is in this area, city, city-maintained street. What they were, I think what the applicant was saying is that there's a lot of right-of-way between the existing street and their parcel, and so there's a distance there. The city can require them to put a sidewalk in that unless there's a control of access, but there can still be a process, even when there's control of access, to get approval from DOT to allow that to happen. And the city certainly has an interest in, in making that connection on the east side of Lake Wheeler Road across the entire interchange. So perhaps Jason knows if that is control of access or not and what the applicant's planning on doing, but to be clear, there isn't a prohibition of a sidewalk in a DOT right-of-way.
Got it. Thanks. I just wasn't sure what exactly that meant, but just, it seems like, you know, Lake Wheeler's really wide right there, so it seems like to get over to a sidewalk and then to anywhere by bike or, or walking would be really difficult without that.
Would the applicant like to respond to that comment?
Yeah, we haven't fully vetted the limits of that controlled access. As Jason mentioned, that's traditionally around the interchange area, so there should be a point at which it will stop. We could further vet that. I think the sidewalk, whether it's built or fee-in-lude, that's a conversation that we typically have during the site plan or subdivision process. If there is no connectivity, I think it's typically a fee-in-lude scenario. If we build a section of sidewalk to nowhere or there's no other improvements along the block face, I think it's typically a fee-in-lude situation. There is sidewalk on the opposite side of Kirkland, but there is, again, no additional connectivity from the Lake Wheeler side of this parcel, even across the interstate, et cetera. So I feel like that's coming in the future. Jason and I talked a little bit about it during the initial application for rezoning, which again, we'll do our part as required during the subdivision process.
Thank you. That was helpful. I'm comfortable waiting for the subdivision and site plan review process on that particular piece, but if any other Commissioners want to make a comment on that, please go ahead. If there are no other questions or comments on this particular case, I'd like to entertain a motion. Commissioner Lampman?
Yeah, generally in favor of this project, and I like the idea that there's additional housing being brought to the area. I did consider the area around it being light industrial, so I don't sense that there's going to be any issues there. So with that, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated June 13, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment. The recommendation also includes an amendment to the future land use map to the extent described in the adopted consistency statement. The action taken is reasonable and in the public interest because the requested district will allow for higher-density mixed-use development, including residential in an area with good regional transportation access and close to parks and greenways.
Thank you. And do we have a second? Vice Chair Miller?
Second.
Commissioner Lampman has offered a motion to recommend approval of Z1423. Vice Chair Miller has offered a second. Is there any additional discussion or debate on the merits of the motion? Seeing none, by show of hands, those in favor? And any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the last item in new business, this is item four, rezoning Z1523 between Southwest Street and South Harrington Street, southwest of the West Cabarrus and West Streets intersection. This request is to rezone 0.45 acres from downtown mixed-use five-stories urban limited to downtown mixed-use 12-stories urban limited conditional use. I understand Commissioner Mann needs to recuse himself?
Yes, Madam Chair. Our request to be recused from this rezoning case as it, this case and this development is next-door neighbors to myself, so to avoid the appearance of impropriety, I would like to recuse myself.
Excellent. Thank you. Without objection, Commissioner Mann is recused from Z1523. We will start off with a staff presentation from Alicia Thomas.
All right. Good morning, Alicia Thomas, Planning and Development. The case before you is Z1523. This is a request to rezone 513 Southwest Street and 514 South Harrington Street. These two parcels make up a total of .45 acres, being rezoned from downtown mixed-use five urban limited to downtown mixed-use 12-stories urban limited and conditional use. Your deadline for action is August 12. The site is currently surrounded by a mix of mixed-use zoning. It is on the edge of the downtown mixed-use zoning in the area. And again, mixed-use zoning is in the downtown West Gateway retail districts. The site is currently west of the Red Hat AmpliTheater. It's north of Heritage Park and east of Boylan Heights Neighborhood. Here is a picture of the site along West Street. It's currently a paved parking lot at the rear of the site. And then along Harrington Street, there is an existing building here that has a painting and wallpaper business here. Here are a list of the summary of proposed conditions. Condition number one would prohibit a variety of uses, including adult establishment, a detention center, jail, prison, light manufacturing, vehicle repair, minor and major, vehicle fuel sales, and pawn shops. The following next six conditions will apply in the event that the property is redeveloped with a structure of five stories or greater in height. So condition number two states that a fence of six feet or taller shall be installed along the adjoining property line with 523 Southwest Street for the duration of the construction. Condition number three speaks to no pole-mounted lighting or mechanical equipment shall exceed three feet in height if it is between the existing property and the Fairweather property. Condition number four speaks to transparency requirements. Should there, should the first five stories of the building have a zero-foot setback, then there should be a maximum transparency requirement of 0%, whereas if the first five stories has a setback of six feet or greater, then there should be a maximum transparency of 25%. Condition number five speaks to the multiple, multitude of various restrictions, including illumination, exterior signage, the location of the balcony, building material, and then vertical articulation requirements. Condition number six is a requirement to where the property owner will submit an offer in writing to the neighbor to the south, the Fairweather Condominium Owners Association, to conduct a structural survey. And lastly, condition number seven would be for the property owner to install vibration-sensitive equipment on the site and data to be collected and shared with the city. Here, this table shows the change in existing zoning compared to the proposed zoning. The request would increase the number of units, increasing by 75 units. Office square footage would increase by approximately 32%, and the retail square footage would increase by approximately 40%. The site has higher walk scores, transit, biking, and transportation cost index, as well as a higher job proximity than the city average. The site has transit service nearby. There are three transit stops nearby, including Route 7, 11, and 21. The site would add to the housing supply. It does not speak to subsidized units, and it would permit a variety of housing types and smaller units. Has smaller lot sizes than the city average, and again, it is within walking distance of transit. The site was included in the William Christmas Plan of 1792. There is long-term commercial uses in the area. There's multiple legacy industrial sites nearby with transitioning to more residential and commercial uses here in the area. And the median rent increase has increased by more than, twice in the citywide rate. The request is consistent with the central business district, future land use, and it is consistent as well with the urban limited frontage. The request, again, is consistent overall with the comprehensive plan. And here are a list of policies that the request was found to be consistent with, including future land use map and zoning consistency, reinforcing- reinforcing urban patterns, design guidelines, and downtown design guideline consistency. Staff identified no inconsistent policies with this request. And there are no outstanding issues. And your deadline for action is August 12.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Next, we will hear from the applicant. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
All right. Good morning again. Amy Kraut at Smith Anderson. I have with me today Chip Dillard on behalf of the property owner and applicant in this case, Cabarrus &amp; West LLC. We'd ask that you approve this request. As the staff presentation laid out, the current zoning of this property is DX5UL. We're requesting that it go up to 12 stories with some conditional uses. And this is really to match the property directly to the north. We would note that that other blue property right to the south was recently rezoned to 12 stories. And we'll talk about it a little bit later. We've basically mimicked much of the conditions that were on 520 South Harrington in this rezoning request. And directly to the south is the Fairweather condos. This rezoning request is really to facilitate a 12-story multifamily building on the northern half of the block. I'll note that Cabarrus &amp; West doesn't own the property to the north, but they are under contract to develop that property. And this makes the zoning consistent as a whole for development, which is really important because this rezoning was proposed after the challenges of split zoning of these two sites became clear during site planning. So for the entire northern block, there were plans submitted under ASR 552022 for a split 12-story, five-story building because of the split zoning. The submitted plan included about 298 units. But as the planning process went forward, there were just noticed inefficiencies in design and pricing as, you know, trying to kind of conceptualize the split zoning and put it into practice. For example, a 12-story building typically calls for some concrete design, and the five-story would be wood, making it hard to transition. And the units just became smaller and less efficient in size. So this rezoning allows for greater efficiency and just a better resign in providing for some more residential units there. We would note in thinking about increasing the height to 12 stories, we had significant discussion with the Fairweather condos directly south to the property. There were significant discussions, especially in conjunction with that 520 South Harrington rezoning. Fairweather negotiated significant conditions with them last year. And this request proposes same and similar conditions. These conditions relate to construction guidelines such as fencing. And then condition seven is vibration monitoring as well as building design. There are setbacks and transparency requirements, external illumination requirements and the like. Again, these pretty much mirror what was done in the 520 South Harrington rezoning. These have been negotiated with the neighbors. I know a couple of them are here today, and we're happy to walk you through any of the specific conditions or requests as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to check and see if there are members of the public who wish to speak on this item. You can come forward. Those in opposition have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Suzanne Prince. I live at 523 Southwest Street. And I am one of the Fairweather folks that live in the building adjacent to this property. And I want to say that the developer has worked with us. We've had two meetings with them, and I do feel like we have come a long way with where we are. I do have a couple of concerns that we have not really addressed. And that is, I do think that the project that they have in ASR 55 was a good project. And I would like to see that to continue. We haven't seen any other drawings or anything to tell us what that 12-story building is going to look like right beside of us. And we did like the way that that building tapered with that five-story adjacent, more adjacent to our building. So if we could have a six-foot setback as opposed to having that building right up on top of us with 12 stories, and that's just for the 100 feet that is going to be adjoining the Fairweather building where it's five stories currently, you know, we've got windows that are going to look right straight into this building. And I think that would alleviate some of our concerns. And we have talked with the developer about that, but we haven't gotten any, you know, firm commitment. Obviously, they're trying to leave their options open. Also, a little bit concerned about construction noise. This is going to be right up on top of us, and it's going to be a very big project. And I'd like to have some conditions that spell out at least when the construction is going to be going on. I'd also like to see that the dumpsters are inside of this building. I know they had said during their ASR project that they would be. But that Harrington Street is a very short, narrow street that dead-ends. And so having dumpsters out there is going to be a problem, not only with traffic and turnaround, but also, you know, anything that's left out on the street. So I would like to make sure that those dumpsters are inside. And the other thing that I would say, again, all of their traffic is going to be coming in off of Harrington Street, which is a short, dead-end road. And we're going to be putting in an additional 75 units. So I know there's probably not going to be any traffic study that's going to be required with this project. But we're going to, we're having a lot, we're going to have a lot of a lot of additional trips per day because of that. So again, not totally opposed to the 12 stories. And they have worked with us. But I would like to have some consideration for those items that I've mentioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lowry. I also live at the Fairweather. And I just wanted to reiterate that we all really support those additional conditions and that our bedrooms, our bedroom windows are right next to where the building is going to be built. And if there is no setback of six feet, which we have six feet setback on our property, it's really going to impact us and also the construction hours. And it's several neighbors. We have our bedrooms right there with children who also live in the building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Ann Burke. I also live at the Fairweather and adjacent to this property. And I'm opposed to the rezoning to 12 stories only because the original plan that we saw with the five-story step-down is more suited and fits in with our five-story limitation on our building. And behind us, as you head east in the city, we're backed up to the Boylan Heights development. And there are no other 12-story buildings behind us. The Kane property down on Cabarrus Street, which is coming close to completion, is only seven stories. So I object to the 12 stories. I realize the original zoning on the Cabarrus property that's adjacent to this one is 12 stories. But on that street, on our street, Cabarrus, going down to Cabarrus, that 12-story impact will be much less because their height difference between our street level and their street level is significant. So I think that this, going to 12 stories adjacent to us is not a good fit for the street. I also object to the fact that there are no affordable units being offered in this property. And I think considering the neighborhood that it's being built in, that that should be taken into consideration. And if, especially if you go forward with the 12-story approval, then the additional units that ought to be required, that there be some affordable units. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public here who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to questions or comments from Commissioners.
I'll kick us off. Would the applicant like to respond to those comments from the public about the six-foot setbacks, the height and affordable units?
Hi, I'm Chip Dillard with Elmwood Development over in Durham. So the six-foot setback, we're, you know, up to five stories, there was no setback. So really, what we're doing is, I think, the same thing as what our neighbor who just rezoned last year, basically above what we have, which is five stories. Then we setback, I believe, if that's the case. Vertical articulation. So I think what we're trying to do is just, any incremental zoning is when the setback starts, if that makes sense.
And if I can just clarify that for a second. That original ASR...
I'm sorry, can I just ask that you speak in the mic, please?
If I can clarify that. That original ASR plan had a zero-foot setback originally. So we're not changing, the reason we didn't change is that ASR was the exact same. It was a zero-foot setback. And then we included that vertical articulation within the zoning conditions. That's consistent with the rezoning allowed at 520 South Harrington.
And one more. With the additional zoning, it's not really 75 units. That might be, you know, if you multiply the space. But the reality of the way the site plan is, it's really about 40-ish, possibly less, maybe a few more additional units with this zoning. The biggest thing for us is transitioning between a wonky site that's five stories and then a 12-story site that's also, you know, got some undulations. And the difference in construction types that really want, you're going to have wood frames settling at this rate, concrete settling at this rate. It makes it hard with brick, which we want to do. It's just, it makes it really hard to kind of do both, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Peeler?
Yeah, so is the 12-story part of that, is it on the Harrington side or the West Street side?
Both. It's on the north half. So it's on Cabarrus, West, and Harrington as the north half.
Got it.
We're on the south half.
Okay.
And then there's one more parcel that's 12 stories southeast of us as well.
Okay. Is it possible to bring that back up? I'm just trying to get a vision of what that looks like. Yeah. And I would also just reiterate, I think someone already mentioned it, but yeah, I would love to see, you know, affordable units in this project because that's a part of town. You see it in the demographics here that, you know, it used to be fairly blue-collar. And now I believe it's a rate that's higher than the city average. And yeah, I think incorporating that into the design of this area would be great. I love the way that area is turning out and changing over. But having affordable units there, I think, would be really important.
I understand. We're not really, you know, ready to commit to that at this time. I would say also on the question as it relates to the access, we originally had access on West Street and Harrington Street. But we were really kind of pushed towards access only on Harrington into a deck that's completely hidden by the building. Because West Street, we want to protect the long-term corridor, which we totally agree with, to add the, I think it's either a 10 or I can't remember how wide-foot bike lane, multi-access, you know, path that'll eventually hopefully connect underneath the railroad tracks up West Street on further north. So we're kind of trying to protect that West Street corridor from too many vehicles coming in and out, which is why we put all of our access on Harrington as well as a 30-foot-deep trash room where all of our trash stuff will be inside, all of our power stuff inside, everything inside. So it's really all kind of on that Harrington side inside the building as well.
I see Commissioner Lampman has a question, and I also wanted to ask Commissioner Lampman a question. So it's a quiz question. Yeah. And remembering, we had a conversation a while ago about there's a minimum number of units you have to have in a project to be considered for Lytech. Is that true?
Yes.
What was that number? Was it like 120 or something?
No. Well, it's essentially a 60/40. So 40% of your units would be at 60% of area median income, or 20% of your units would be at 50% area median income.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the regulation. On the dumpster discussion, would you mind putting that into? If you already have it in the site plan, would you be opposed to putting that in a condition?
Uh, no.
Okay. Being that it would be inside and...
Yeah, and then full trash room inside.
Sure, cool. And then in terms of hours of construction, I'm sure the city has general stipulation on hours of construction. Can I, from staff, can I just get what those hours are?
Yeah, this came up on the earlier case as well. Commissioner Raines, did you have a comment?
Don't quote me on this, but I believe it's 7:00 AM to 8:30 PM.
I believe it's related to noise.
Noise, construction noise specifically.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then can you, I'm sorry, you're going to have to repeat this. Can you just say it one more time, maybe in another way, why the six-foot setback is not feasible?
I'm not sure that it is completely unfeasible. I think that the, on the southeastern side...
I'm sorry, can you talk in the mic, please? I keep saying that because we get, I sometimes get emails or texts from people who are watching who say, "I can't hear."
I can't hear myself sometimes.
Yeah, so we can hear you, but they can't hear you.
I appreciate it as a person who's losing their hearing. So normally, I'm lip-reading when you walk away, so thank you.
The southeastern portion of the site where we abut the 12-story zoning, I don't think it's possible because of all of our access points on that side. We're really pushed down as far as we can for our vehicular access so that we can internalize the deck, if that makes sense. On the southwestern portion of the site, I don't, I don't know. I mean, we, you know, we kind of have to look and see. It's a thing where if it's zero feet, then it's no windows. If it's six feet, then you start to have windows. Either way, it's tight. And I think we're just trying to really keep it consistent with the west side and the east side and to kind of mimic the conditions that were put on, put in place last year on that blue parcel right there as well.
Commissioner Bennett, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I will. I would be highly encouraging of a six-foot setback. I feel like that's kind of a minimum request.
I appreciate that this rezoning, the conditions are attempting to be consistent with the adjacent rezoning. And I guess one question for staff is, did you note, and I could have pulled it up myself, but I know it changed after it went to council, did you note any substantial deviations from the conditions in the adjacent rezoning versus what's being offered here?
You're referring to the property directly to the south?
Yes.
Yes. So originally, I believe that case had some inconsistent policies specifically related to height that were there. And then, because they were requesting 20 stories, but then it was then lowered to the 12. And I believe many of those conditions or policies were no longer found to be inconsistent. And then there were very similar policies or conditions that are being offered, like the survey at the time of CO that's being requested, as well as the vibration, vibration monitoring equipment. Those are similar conditions that this case is proposing as well.
I seem to recall, and I don't know if this happened when it was before us or before council, but I seem to recall conditions about construction hours. I also seem to recall conditions about hours for bars and nightclubs. I feel like there were conditions added about hours of operations. And yeah, limiting uses that could impact the adjacent property owners. If that is the case, I would encourage... the applicant to mimic those conditions because whether we requested them or council did, I, I don't want there to be disparate treatment of adjacent property owners.
Thank you, that's helpful. Commissioner Lampman?
I think I'm recalling a case where there was a ballroom dance rezoning, and we were trying to put restriction on hours. And then it became an issue of enforceability that I think made us not enforce hours on that case.
Like we've had a few.
That was the one off Glenwood, and they, they brought conditions back to council. Counsel and staff agreed upon that were enforceable. I can't remember exactly what they were, but they addressed that, that particular enforcement was their issue. They, planning staff couldn't survey businesses. So you couldn't say like, oh, the business has to close by 6:00 because there's not planning staff to go by at 6:30 and enforce all that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Thomas, did you have a comment?
I was just gonna add clarification. You are correct. There are some conditions in the other property related to hours of operation for eating establishments and like bars and taverns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we are recommending we defer this item. There are a couple of things we'd like some follow-up on. Commissioner Rains, if you had another one.
Clarification from the applicant. Regardless if it's a zero or six-foot step back, you mentioned that there's a, or setback, there's a step back above five stories. Could you clarify what the intention is and what that number would be?
I think what you're talking about is in 5E, if there's a five-story, has a 0% setback, then no portion of the facade shall extend more than 30 linear feet without a projection forward of, or backwards of at least one foot in the design. That's that vertical articulation.
It's just one foot?
Yes, as proposed, it is just one foot. And again, the ASR that originally submitted was a zero-foot setback. This is not a change from that. We've kept that zero-foot setback and have provided kind of significant conditions for those first five stories. So the impact on the fair weather condos is limited.
I'll just echo some other comments from other commissioners. I think that if possible, having a minimum of six-foot setback adjacent to 100-foot of the fair weather would be a recommendation.
Thank you. So I'm gonna, go ahead, Commissioner Bennett.
I also seem to recall, even though we can't require it, we can't even really request it. But I will note that I believe when the adjacent rezoning left council, there was a condition for affordable housing in it. So I'll just make that note and note that it would be nice to have affordable housing in this area.
Excellent. Thank you for your comment. I'm gonna summarize what I heard that we are looking for the applicant to do additional investigation into. That is the condition related to where the dumpster would be, that six-foot setback, limiting some uses and addressing some of the hours of operation. Would we want to defer this to our next item, to our next meeting on June 27? Or does the applicant need additional time?
June 27th, great.
Okay. So without objection, this item is deferred to our June 27 meeting. That concludes our discussion items today, so we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. Draft meeting minutes from the March 23 Committee of the Whole Meeting and May 23 Planning Commission meeting are included in the backup. If there, are there any?
Move to approve both minutes.
Excellent, thank you. I like your style, and I would like to second. Yeah, you, you got there, okay. So Commissioner Otwell has offered a motion to approve both sets of minutes, and Chair Fox has offered a second. By show of hands, those in favor? And any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to other business, we have report of the chair. I don't really have anything to report. Just again, this will then be my last meeting as the chair. So you will see me again, just seated somewhere differently. It would be great. And I'm very excited. I know, and this is Commissioner Dotell's last meeting.
Yeah, this is my last meeting. Did want to thank everybody for the opportunity to serve on this commission with you. And it's been a great experience, and wish you all luck, and appreciate all the, the commitment that you bring to this effort, so thanks.
Thank you. You will be missed.
You will.
And then we didn't have a little clap of hands for Commissioner Elder when it was her last day, but we'll do it in absentia. Thank you, Commissioner Elder. She was a very helpful and beneficial member to have on the commission, and we will miss her as well. So I'll give her a little round of applause. Anyway, thank you. Now I'm just gonna move on to report from members and go down the line and talk about, mention maybe when we might have committee meetings forthcoming.
Thank you. The Committee of the Whole will meet twice this month. We will have our regularly scheduled, a regular meeting on June 22 to discuss one item that I believe will be deferred at that meeting. Is that correct?
That's right. So at your June 22 meeting, which I'd love to get a feel for attendance before you leave today, who's planning to be at the meeting on June 22? I just am looking for a quorum. Six. Okay, so we got at least six. That's excellent. That is a case you heard earlier this spring back in March at Boylan and Hargit on the east side of St. Mary's from the Joel Lane House. The applicant has indicated that they would like an extension of, of your review period to continue their discussion with residents, neighbors. But because you deferred it to a date certain, we do need to have it on the agenda and meet. It may be a very short meeting. That's the gift I can give. It's a short meeting.
Will there be any substantive discussion at that time?
Case has not changed. I think it will really be up to you whether you want to hear from the public.
Did he indicate that changes are in process at this time?
He has indicated ongoing discussion with neighbors.
Okay. Okay, so that is the June 22 meeting. Thank you for everyone, for achieving a quorum there. And then the, our next Committee of the Whole meeting will hold a special meeting on June 29 to discuss the New Bern area planning study and related rezoning cases in this room from 4:00 to at least 6:30.
And we're moving down the line. We already introduced ourselves to you, Commissioner Peeler. So if you don't have a report, it's okay to pass.
I'm sorry, I don't have one.
There you go. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. Couple things. Thank you, Chair Fox. I've enjoyed your chairmanship. And welcome, Chair Miller. Welcome, Commissioner Reeves. I'll miss you, Commissioner Dotell. I think that's it. Also, Infrastructure and Mobility met May 25. The minutes didn't make it to this meeting, but they'll be in our next Planning Commission meeting. I had some emails from people who wanted to see the minutes. We had a really good discussion with Partners for Environmental Justice and City Stormwater. It was a really, really good discussion. We, it was so good that we are continuing it on June 22 at 3:00 in room 303. I believe City Stormwater will be giving a formal presentation at that one. And we will just continue what we had talked about. And then the last thing I want to mention, because sometimes I like to just, based on the feedback that we hear from public, I just like to say things on the record for people who are listening. So we often talk about the importance of community engagement for these rezoning cases. And sometimes the difference in how certain communities are engaged just based on the community. One of the things I noted, and I believe we've mentioned this sort of in jest before, but one of the things I noticed on a couple of the cases today is we can even have conditions about the location of dumpsters. And it's really telling when that's the primary concern. When some people are really concerned about just being able to stay in their homes. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with having that as a condition. But I want people who are listening to understand when there's a rezoning in your neighborhood, you can ask for things. Don't just accept what's being given. You can request conditions around construction noise. You can request conditions around the location of dumpsters. You can request conditions that affect your livability. So I just wanted to make that note to just try to help the engagement process and educate the public so they know what they can ask for. It doesn't matter what your zip code is or where you live. You too can ask for these conditions.
Actually, while you have the mic, I'm recalling a conversation we had recently about LEP communities and what percentage the threshold is by which you start to do something different or change the engagement. And so Commissioner Bennett and I work professionally in the field and often have to investigate what the low English proficiency community percentage is and what the industry standards are related to it. And I was surprised when we looked up, so for FTA, so Federal Transit Administration, when you're working on Title VI compliance about changing a bus route or anything, the threshold is very low. It's 5%. Yeah, and.
That's NC DOT's threshold as well.
As well. So I find that interesting. So when the percentage of low English proficiency is greater than 5%, you are then required to do outreach in the language, the primary language of those speakers. So I'm just, and I'll also note that ChatGPT does translations. Just putting that out there. So it's not a challenge to do a translation. And it's not, it's not a request of staff. It's actually, it's just an acknowledgement for applicants that there are industry standards related to low English proficiency. I do notice it too, because we talk about that all the time. That, that like, no one looks at the portal, and, and that is somehow related when we have like a high LEP number.
Right, right. So sometimes when we hear there was no, no one showed up at a meeting, or we didn't get any opposition, maybe they didn't know about it. But Bynum, did you have something to add about that?
Yeah, so I was just, I was talking with Commissioner Bennett about this last week at whatever committee meeting that was.
Structure and Mobility, ma'am. Respect my committee.
No, it was strategic planning, actually. It wasn't your committee.
Oh, it was strategic planning, that's right, I'm sorry. Respect Commissioner Lampman's committee.
We actually have, I've been working with staff in the department. We are going to be moving to, all of the city mailed notice will be in both English and Spanish de facto. All of the, all of the reviewing percents every time. It's just like recipe for error.
Yeah.
And so, and we mail the same letter every time. So those letters are going to be translated into Spanish and will be mailed. City letters at least will always be in Spanish.
Makes me very happy.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
And, and part of how, how we're gonna do that is we have two new staff members starting next week. And one of them is Spanish fluent, which is a great addition to our staff.
Thank you. I'm glad I brought it up. Sorry, I hijacked the meeting. I can do whatever I want. It's my last day. But I'm, I'm actually glad that came out. I really appreciate your work on that. Thank you, Bynum.
Thank you, Bynum, for doing that. And also, welcome to all your new staff.
Okay, sorry, I'm done hijacking. Commissioner Mann?
Tough act to follow, but that being said, I don't have anything to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Rains?
For the Text Change Committee, our next scheduled one is August, is in August. But I noticed on the website, there's a meeting scheduled for June 21st, but we don't have any cases or content for that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll regroup after the break, and I echo others' comments. Thank you for your being chair. Welcome and keep around.
Thank you. Commissioner Otwell?
I'd like to say thank you to Chair Fox. I've learned a lot from you in my brief time here, and I hope to continue to learn from you with your service on the commission. And I look forward to working under Chair Miller. Congratulations and welcome to Commissioner Peeler, and thank you, Commissioner Dotell. With respect to Commissioner Bennett's comments, one, I'll add that one of the things that I've noticed that increases this dynamic of certain neighborhoods and communities not having the voice here that others do. I've noticed that some of these neighborhood groups have been starting to hire land use lawyers to represent them at Planning Commission meetings and in front of council to get their conditions worked out. And that strikes me as incredibly inequitable to the communities that can't afford those kind of services. And I don't know how we address that besides just keeping it in mind as we deliberate. But I think it's, it has struck me as a great disparity.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Dotell?
Yeah, nothing really in addition, but thank you and good luck to everybody. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Lampman?
Strategic Planning Committee met last week. That will be discussed, I believe, at the next committee. So no upcoming meetings, and again, lots of changes going on recently. I welcome them all. Sorry you're leaving, but thank you for your service and thanks for sitting next to me in most cases.
May I add one additional item? I was thinking as the Vice Chair report. I also just wanted to add, thank you for your support in voting for me for, as, at the incoming chair for the next fiscal year. I'm grateful for the opportunity and really look forward to facilitating a robust conversation and elevating the voices here and including, including having just, like I said, an incredibly robust conversation with different people from their different areas of expertise, and making sure that we improve these cases and really create a great outlook for the city with, with the projects that are coming through here. So thank you all very much, and I'll be reaching out to everybody to talk about committee assignments and interests and any other thoughts on how we might move forward and improve some of the processes and outcomes. So thank you very much.
Well, I have no follow-up after that. That was good. All right, so if there's nothing else for the good of the order, that concludes this Planning Commission meeting. Oh, Bynum, oh, you have, I didn't gather yet.
Can I make my report?
Go, oh, go. Oh, I apologize. I read your report and I was like, it's, it's all good.
Things to add.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to thank Commissioner, echo thanks for Commissioner Elder and Commissioner Dotell. I have enjoyed working with you, appreciate your contribution to the body. It's an important part of the city's work and appreciate the time it has represented for you during your term. We have had a very heavy volume of cases during the past two years, and you have been champs. So well done. And thank you to Commissioners Fox and Miller for serving as officers this past year. Appreciate your extra service there. Looking forward, Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Rains, to serving with you in the new year. Yay. I would like your insight about committee appointments as soon as possible. Happily, there is no impact to the June 22 Infrastructure and Mobility Committee membership and quorum issue there. So excellent that we can carry on there. So happy, Commissioner Peeler, that you could join us today. That's wonderful. And then Commissioner LT McCrimmon will join us for the Special Cow on the 29th. That'll be her first meeting with us. That's quite a baptism by fire. And that, I think, is my, that's it. In addition to what's written down in the print. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Will she be joining us for the June 27 regular Planning Commission meeting too?
No, but Mr. Peeler will.
I see, okay.
All right, now that should conclude. Oh, but Mr. Peeler?
I was just saying, I actually won't be at the 27th. I'll, I'll be at the 22nd, though.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, now the gavel is slowly raising. If anyone has any additional comments. No.
Could I, could I check on a quorum for the June 27 regular Planning Commission meeting?
Good, show of hands?
The regular meeting?
Regular meeting on June 27th. It sounds like there's. Regular meeting on June 27, it sounds like there's...
Yep, show of hands, those who will be here.
Show of hands, who will be here on June 27? Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Yes.
Racing calendars.
Or... CG is up, okay.
And Commissioner McCrimmon will be here as well.
Okay, she will be here on the 27th.
She will be here the 27th and the 29th.
Okay.
Mr. Peeler has said he would be here the 13th and the 22nd.
Yes, okay.
All right, so we have a quorum?
Yes.
Excellent, all right, thank you for checking that. Okay, then with that, that concludes this meeting of the Planning Commission, thank you.